Welcome to the Falmouth Chamber of Commerce.
The Falmouth Chamber is dedicated to working on behalf of our members to make Falmouth a better place to live, work, and conduct business. We are committed to developing the economic, cultural, educational, and civic interests of our community, and welcome the support from all organizations to achieve our combined goals. Whether you call Falmouth home, are a summer resident, or a visitor, we hope you take advantage of all that the Chamber has to offer.
Nestled in a classic New England setting amid 200-year-old elm trees, and charming colonial homes, stately sea captains' homes, and charming Cape Cod salt boxes. Shoreway Acres is a graceful blend of Cape Cod's past and present. Shoreway Acres, proud sponsor of Falmouth Community Television.
Green Harbor Waterfront Lodging is nestled in a woodland setting on a picturesque ocean inlet. Green Harbor offers a family waterfront vacation. Enjoy our private boating beach with dock, rowboats, and paddle boats, oversized heated outdoor pool and kiddie pool. Relax in our waterfront and beachside accommodations. 548-4747, or gogreenharbor.com. People think that a locally-owned and operated appliance store may not offer what they need. Actually, we have trained and dedicated sales associates, expert delivery and installation, professional repair service, and personal customer service. Plus, we have access to a huge local warehouse with over 6,000 models in stock. Crane Appliance, we call the Cape and Islands home. Carlson Printing for all your printing needs. 508-548-7303, or toll-free at 1-800-696-7303. Our email address is carsonprinting@al.com. Carlson Printing for all your printing needs.
Hosting services for FCTV.org are provided by Meganet Communications. Meganet offers a wide array of internet services, including mega-backup cloud service, server colocation, T1, fiber, metro ethernet, as well as telephone services such as hosted PBX and digital voice. Their number-one goal is to keep your communications network up and running, and allow you to focus on growing your business. 877-634-2638, or meganet.net.
The Quarterdeck Restaurant, located on Main Street in the heart of Falmouth, specializing in fresh local seafood and other classic American cuisine, featuring a full bar with friendly staff. And the Bucatino Restaurant and Wine Bar, located in North Falmouth just off Nathan Ellis Highway, featuring catering services with two full event rooms serving up classic Italian cuisine. The Quarterdeck Restaurant and Bucatino Restaurant and Wine Bar, we're here to serve all our friends in Falmouth.
Board of Selectmen meeting for May 18, 2020. We are in open session, but we are about to head into executive session under Mass General Law Section 30A, I'm sorry, Mass General Law 30A, Section 21A3, review and discuss proposed workers' compensation settlement for a town employee. And as Chair, I note that not to enter into executive session could place the town in a vulnerable position going forward. So with that, do I have a second?
Joan, second.
Okay, and by roll call, Patterson?
Patterson, aye.
Jones?
Jones, aye.
Brown?
Brown, aye.
Moran?
Moran, aye. Did you say you'd be returning? I probably missed that.
No, I was just about to say we'll be returning approximately 7 o'clock, just to note, for people to note that it does require a little bit of a technical finagling to have this happen, so if it's a little bit after 7, not to worry, it's just, it requires coming in and out of these Zoom platforms. So we'll be back in session somewhere right around 7 o'clock. Okay? Thank you.
Very good.
To the flag of the United States of America. And to their public, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and for all.
Thank you. We have a couple of proclamations this evening for some really impressive Eagle Scout projects that we'll hear about, and Mr. Patterson, if you would like to read, we have two Eagle Scout proclamations tonight. James Lee from Troop 40, and Jack Warner, also from Troop 40. So if we could read those proclamations, and then we'll hear a little bit about their project. If they are here waiting to be let in, if we could let them in, that would be great. So go ahead, Mr. Patterson, if you want to read the proclamations.
I just might say that these are two young men that I have met and done some hiking with, did Mount Manadok with both of them, I think on the same activity. So these are fine young men, and I will not only read their proclamation, but some of the statements that they actually made in their application to the Boy Scouts of America for their Eagle rank. I'll start off with, whereas James R. Lee of Boy Scout Troop 40 has successfully completed qualifications for the rank of Eagle Scout, a rigorous and demanding process that teaches patience, perseverance, and teamwork, and requires strong goal-setting. And James R. Lee met these challenges with aplomb, and shall be recognized as an outstanding representative of his family, his troop, and Falmouth. And whereas the Boy Scouts of America, long acknowledged for building fine citizens, calls for a special court of honor to award its highest symbol of achievement to those who complete this rank. And whereas James R. Lee is now an Eagle Scout with all its rank and privileges, now therefore we, Megan English Praga, Douglas C. Brown, Douglas H. Jones, Susan L. Moran, and Samuel H. Patterson, as selectmen of the Town of Falmouth, do hereby declare and proclaim, James R. Lee is joining the ranks of many Falmouth Eagle Scouts. In witness thereof, we have hereon to set our hand and cause the great seal of the Town of Falmouth to be affixed on this 18th day of May, 2020.
Second, Jones?
Okay, all those in favor by roll call. English Praga, aye. Patterson?
Patterson, aye.
Joan?
Jones, aye.
Moran?
Moran, aye.
Brown?
Brown, aye.
Congratulations. We want to hear a little bit about your project, but I think first, Mr. Patterson wanted to read something from your really impressive letter, so he's going to read a little bit, and then you can tell us a little bit about your project, okay? Go ahead, Sam.
How you doing, James? This is out of your statement that you submitted with your application to the council. It is quite a weird thing to look at scouts as a reminiscent matter. As yet, here we are. There are many positive aspects of my character that I attribute scouts with helping to flesh out. Things like leadership, communication, perseverance, and proficiency are all skills that I can say have been bolstered and fleshed out as a result of my involvement in scouting over the years. Beyond nice one-word character traits, I could say it has helped me to much more open, be much more open to new situations, as well as stepping outside of my comfort zone. More than any character-building qualities, the best thing scouting has done for me will always be the memories. There are plenty of moments in scouts when I found myself confused as to why I was doing what I was doing on rainy campouts and strenuous hikes, only to look back on those moments with nothing but fondness. It goes on to say that from the days overlooking the lake, to the feeling of reaching a mountain summit, the happiness of memories alone is what is truly best parts of the scouting for me. I have been doing scouts for the better part of a decade now, and the character qualities and memories it has given me have left a positive and permanent impact on me. So, James, congratulations, and it's a nicely-written statement.
Yeah, thank you.
That's wonderful. So tell us a little bit about your project, James.
Right, so my project, usually when you think of Eagle Scout projects, it's sort of these like one-day things where like a bunch of people go out and they'll get something done. Mine was a bit different from that. It was, we set up these QR codes at various points on a Quay trails. And so how they worked is, if you go on the trail and you see the QR code, you can scan it with your phone, like any phone should be able to work. And it'll then send a link, or it'll redirect you to a recording of something in the area. So the QR code will send you to something that will inform you about cranberry bogs, or a local kind of trout, or something, right? It's this idea that the disposable trail markers and all that are a bit more old-fashioned than what we could be doing. So it's this, this use of 21st century technology to help guide people along trails. And so we set up a bunch of them, and it was this process of like getting these scripts written, doing the research, doing recording, and then from there, we like got these QR codes printed, and now if you go to a Quay trail, you should be able to see like various QR codes throughout, and it'll give you sort of information about things.
That's just amazing, and what a great way to engage with maybe a whole different audience of people, you know, maybe sort of younger, different generation in a way that's also really green, instead of having all kinds of paper pamphlet that people take and maybe get dropped along the way or not recycled. That's just really incredible. Wow, thank you.
Yeah, thank you guys.
Hope Betsy Gladfelter is listening to this, because that could be a nice addition to the Coonamessin River Heritage Trail.
Yes.
That could be the new standard. That's a great idea.
I'd say so.
Thank you. Well, congratulations, and hopefully at some point you'll be able to have a celebration that is with people, real people, and not just everyone on a screen, but
Sure.
But that accomplishment is really impressive, and thank you so much for improving our town. That's just incredible. Thank you.
Oh yeah, thank you guys. I appreciate it.
Great job.
Next, next we have Jack Warner. Welcome, Jack. And go ahead, Sam.
Yes, formerly known as John W. Warner, but whereas John W. Warner of Boy Scout Troop 40 has successfully completed qualifications for the rank of Eagle Scout, a rigorous and demanding process that teaches patience, perseverance, and teamwork, and requires strong goal-setting. And John W. Warner met these challenges with aplomb, and shall be recognized as an outstanding representative of his family, his troop, and Falmouth. And whereas the Boy Scouts of America, long acknowledged for building fine citizens, calls for a special court of honor to award its highest symbol of achievement to those who complete this rank. And whereas John W. Warner is now an Eagle Scout with all its rank and privileges, now therefore we, Megan English Praga, Douglas C. Brown, Douglas H. Jones, Susan L. Moran, and Samuel H. Patterson, as selectmen of the Town of Falmouth, do hereby declare and proclaim, John W. Warner as one of many Falmouth Eagle Scouts. In witness thereof, we have hereon to set our hand and cause the great seal of the Town of Falmouth to be affixed on this 18th day of May, 2020. Congratulations, Jack.
Second, Jones?
Okay, all those in favor by roll call. Patterson?
Patterson, aye.
Jones?
Jones, aye.
Moran? Brown?
Brown, aye.
Go ahead. English Praga, aye. Congratulations. I'm gonna, I think Sam is also going to read a little bit from your letter, and then we'll hear about your project.
This is from Jack. To me, scouting has always embodied a sense of community. My time spent as scouts laid the foundation for the man I have become today. Those around me instilled the proper values and beliefs, serving as a second family of sorts. I have lifelong friendships and truly, once-in-a-lifetime opportunities to my involvement with Troop 40. Our numerous hikes through the White Mountains and the strenuous Philmon Track brought me closer to my fellow scouts than I could ever have expected. I attribute all my outdoor capabilities to scouting abilities that I am confident in and enjoy using on my many adventures. Scouting to me means family, not one that is given, rather one that is chosen. I am eternally grateful for my experiences as they have changed my life. Congratulations, Jack.
Thank you.
Wow, congratulations. So do you want to tell us, Jack, a little bit about your project?
Yeah, sure. So mine, just like James's, was out in Quay, and so what it was is I wanted to work with something with this children's summer camp that's there, and what I ended up designing was a rain collection water barrel that catches the runoff rain off of the roof and stores it in a water barrel, so that the children, when they, at the summer camp, they go down to the beach, and they'll play in the sand, and they'll come back up to the camp with sandy feet. So instead of using like hose water, that's normally, you could drink that or something. You can repurpose rainwater to wash up your feet, or just wash off tools or stuff you use in the sand. And so, yeah, it was just a way of teaching children about repurposing water, recycling, and you can see it, it's like a visual project. So it was just really nice to be able to see it and use it.
That's amazing. I think we just need a team of Eagle Scouts to work on all of the things that we're working on with with coronavirus. It seems like they'd have some unbelievable possible solutions in short order. That's just really wonderful, particularly for that area where children kind of go to that camp to really learn about nature and learn about some of those things, about sustainability, climate change, and resource management. So what a great addition to the activities that they engage in. That's just wonderful. So, thank you.
Having a good idea. Well done.
Wonderful. Well, congratulations to both of you, and we hope that you are muddling through with school, it's almost over. And hopefully with some nicer weather, you'll be able to get out, and maybe there'll be some type of scouting activities before the summer is over. But thank you for your contributions. Both of those are really lasting contributions to our community, so we appreciate it. Thank you.
Congratulations, guys. Thank you.
Wonderful. How about from Mr. Brown? Any recognition this week?
Well, this is Police Week, and ordinarily, we would gather at the police station in front of the memorial there, and have a few words from the chief, and he did that on video this week, this year. So I did get to see that. It was well done. So just thanks to the police, all the work that they do, and all the sacrifices that they make every day, year after year. Much appreciated.
Great, great point. Thank you. Any announcements?
Tomorrow's Election Day.
Yes.
Don't forget to vote.
Reminder that election is going on, and even though we've had an amazing turnout for folks voting via mail, the polls will be open, just as usual, other than some social distancing measures, so you know, get there, be patient, but it may look like the line is long, and it may be much shorter just because of that spacing in between individuals. So no reason for folks not to get out, and a huge thanks to all the poll workers, all the individuals who are going to make tomorrow possible, even in the midst of some of the challenges.
And the lines may be longer outside, but it means when you get in, it'll be very quick.
Good point.
Lines inside, the lines are going to be outside the polling places.
Yep, good point. Sue?
I just want to mention, Michael Palmer has been incredibly inventive. He's dove into this with gusto. It's going to be a template for things to come, certainly in November. And he just has worked tirelessly and dealt with every single individual question, as has his team, so kudos to all of them.
Right, thank you.
I don't know if anybody noticed in the news today that there was clinical trials going on with a antigen test, 45 human trials, and every one of them successfully built up strong antigens against the coronavirus. So there's a very good hope that there could be a vaccine coming along, not too far off.
Yeah.
I'm hopeful about it.
Got to be hopeful, I guess, that's all.
Yeah.
All we can do, right?
Right.
So yes, Julian, do you have an announcement?
Yes, Megan, just to confirm, of course, as the board is aware, Monday is Memorial Day, and Town Hall and Town Administrative Offices will be closed, meaning that employees will not be working on that day, although we're working all the other days that we've been closed to the public. So I also wanted to note that the preparations for the virtual Memorial Day ceremony, I understand, have been completed by the Veteran Services Office, and that should be appearing on FCTV if it is not already available. That preparations were in process as of late last week. And I want to thank Veteran Services Agent Don Lincoln and Julie Catigan, his assistant, as well as the Veterans Council for the great work in preparing that very important virtual ceremony for a very, very important day for all of us here in the Town of Falmouth.
Yes, thank you, Julian, for pointing that out. Go ahead, Sam.
Do they have a time yet for that service, when it's going to be started?
Well, it's, it has been filmed by FCTV, so it's going to be broadcast at a date and a time to be determined. I do not have that with me, but I know it's nearly complete. So by checking with the FCTV website, I'm certain that information is available there.
Thank you.
And just, just a reminder that obviously, you know, this is necessitated by the governor's mandate that's still in place around social distancing and gathering. But the other piece to really emphasize is that, you know, this is a day that is so solemn and really meaningful to so many people. And we don't ever want to put folks into a position, particularly veterans, particularly family members of those who've really given the ultimate sacrifice, of feeling as if they're not attending, and are somehow not recognizing and honoring that important holiday. And so to have it done in this way really takes that pressure and that decision, which is not an easy one for folks to make. And so we are going to recognize it, we're going to honor it in the best way that we can under these challenging circumstances. But, you know, not least of which, you know, in terms of the thought that went into it, was really the safety and just lifting that weight of folks having to make a hard choice between feeling they're doing the right thing in terms of their health, and the right thing just in terms of sort of, you know, a day that is very close, near and dear to a lot of people and close to their heart. So we appreciate all the work that went into it, and certainly, we hope that folks will be able to watch that and just commemorate that day, you know, in a different way, but equally important. Doug?
Just to be a little bit of a rule-sticker, do you need to read into the special rules or record about the remote meetings?
Yeah, I don't have to, but I'm going to, and I skipped that, so thank you for reminding me. I'm going to do a shortened version
Okay.
before we get to public comment, so this is actually a good time to do it. This is just a reminder, and thank you, Doug, that we are having this meeting in accordance with the governor's orders suspending certain provisions of the Open Meeting Law, Mass General Law 30A, Section 20, relating to the 2020 novel coronavirus outbreak emergency. This May 18, 2020, public meeting will be physically closed to the public to avoid group congregation. However, we, as we've noted before, and I'll go over it again, we are still opening up the meeting for public comment in a number of ways. And I'll explain, one mechanism is for folks to email us in advance, and we do have a letter tonight that someone emailed to us and asked to be read into the public record. We will do that. We will honor all of those requests. If folks are not comfortable with the alternative way of participating, which is to actually participate in the Zoom meeting. And those instructions were in the posting of the agenda. They're also, if you miss that, they're on the town's website. And you can enter in, in real time of our meeting and participate in public comment. There is Peter Johnson Staub, Assistant Town Manager, is really monitoring that, and he will let me know if, even if you kind of miss the timing of it, if you have a public comment that you'd like to make, and you do reach out via the Zoom mechanism, we will read that into the public record. And I'll just note that instructions and the meeting link for the specific meeting can be found at the following web address, and this is on the town website, but HTTP, and then it's www.falmouthmass.us/ BOS. And you can log in there, and then you can use the chat function to enter in whatever your comment is that you want to have submitted. Okay? So if folks want to do that, they can, and otherwise, they can send us correspondence in advance of our meetings. Okay, so at this point, we do have public comment, and so Mr. Johnson Staub will let us know if we have anyone who would like to participate. And while he is letting me know that, I am going to read a letter that we did receive. And just bear with me, I just need to open it up. And we received this letter, I think it came in today, actually. And this is a letter from Robert C. Young, Precinct 5, and it's in regards to the beach, opening up of the town beaches. And it's very specific to the beaches, which we don't have any particular agenda item about beaches. We're going to talk about the governor's general Phase 1 discussion that he had today, but this is specific to beaches, so I'll read it under public comment. Dear Falmouth Select Board, I'm writing with regards to the discussion and decision you will render as it pertains to our 12-town beaches and parking lots. All of our town beaches are unique, and each one has its own certain type of character and use. Adjacent parking areas also present different use challenges, and now with the present virus situation, even more so. Rules for the use of the beaches by residents and guests should be similar in nature and probably follow the guidelines issued by the governor as it pertains to spacing on the beach and face mask requirements. Enforcement of rules will still lie with the lifeguards as it has in the past. Backup by summer police as needed may be used. Parking lot policies would fall more under local jurisdiction, and the rules there would be determined by the town selectmen. Lots used by town residents with beach stickers should be maintained and possibly expanded upon, based on the number of spaces designated for use. If there is alternate spacing of cars, an additional sticker spot should be allocated. If the lot usage remains the same as in the past with all spaces used, the usual breakdown of sticker and pay lots may continue to be used. The supervision of beach parking must be improved upon this year, however. The lack of supervision of parking lots in prior years after attendance left at 4:00 p.m. led to a quote "Wild West" end quote type of atmosphere at both Chappaquaig and Old Silver Beach. Parking was out of control as soon as attendees were gone. This cannot happen again this year. Surf Drive, Falmouth Heights, Old Silver Beach, and especially Chappaquaig Beach must have parking attendants on duty until 8:00 p.m. during the season. There must also be a summer police officer present at these four parking lots to help with enforcement. With all the money the town takes in from parking lot fees during the summer, a police presence is easily justified throughout the day while the parking lots are being used. Please consider my comments and your deliberation for the for the beach use in this coming year. Sincerely, Robert C. Young. Okay, so we can't comment on that because that's under a public comment, but we thank you, Mr. Young, for sending that in. And Peter, are there any other individuals who have sent us any public comment?
There are none.
Thank you.
I did receive a letter from a Falmouth resident today, and the person didn't actually ask for it to be expressly included in the public comment, but it is a comment I received today, and I would like to comment on it if that's okay.
So, why don't we, what I would say is, does it fall under something that we're going to discuss?
It does not. I don't believe so, not specifically.
So, I guess I would just look for, if someone hasn't asked for it to be a public comment, and it's not listed on our agenda, I just worry that we are taking something out of, you know, something beyond the scope of what our agenda allows for. So, maybe if you wanna-
They're actually requesting, they're actually requesting action from our board. So, I guess, all right, I'll let this go for now. We'll put it on a future agenda item.
Right, we, exactly. Yep, thank you. Okay, so, under summary of actions, oh, go ahead, Sam, you're muted.
Yeah. I think it also begs the question of, are we selectively picking out comments that somebody shared with us and using this as an option to basically put a voice to that? If they come, that's one thing, that they have that right, but for us to selectively take comments that somebody made to us and make it a public comment, it's because we're editorializing it to some extent, is basically what I'm, yes.
I only felt it was important because it's actually a petition, and it's got like 250 people signed on to it, so.
So, I think we can put it on as an agenda item, and that way, we can properly discuss it under Open Meeting Law. Just to be clear for folks, if you send us a letter or an email, please do as Mr. Young and others have done. Mr. Young specifically wrote, "Please read my letter into the record for discussion," I think what he meant for public comment. So, please, if people are clear with that, then we will do that. Otherwise, we'll put it on as an agenda item so we can discuss it appropriately.
All right then.
All right, great. So, under summary of actions, we have administrative orders, vote to permit New Silver Beach Improvement Association to remove seaweed from Town Parcel 04A 41 000098 at New Silver Beach in accordance with the Order of Conditions issued by the Conservation Commission. Peter, do we have a presentation on this or any information that we need beyond what's in our packet? Or Julian?
We do have Michael Boselli representing the applicant, who can be brought in as a panelist and make a report.
Great. If we could do that.
Was with us a moment ago, I presume he still is, and I believe David O'Keefe as well.
Great.
Yes, David O'Keefe is here.
Hi, folks. Can you hear?
Welcome.
Boselli?
Welcome. If you want to just tell us, give us, obviously, we have, you know, what's in our packet, but if you want to just give us an update and let us know where things stand and-
Sure, I'd be happy to do that. With your permission, I would like to share a screen to show a drawing.
Yep, please do.
Thank you. All right. Hopefully, I'm sharing a drawing with you folks now?
You are, we can see it.
Great. So, for the record, my name is Michael Boselli from Falmouth Engineering, and I represent the applicant, the New Silver Beach Association. The association owns a property and beach on Wild Harbor in North Falmouth, in the New Silver Beach area. For reference, you can see on the drawing, on this left side, a stone jetty that, in the channel entrance to the harbor where the town docking bulkhead facility is, is just off the page. So, this is right on Wild Harbor, Ocean View Avenue, as shown for reference here. The town owns this parcel on the most westerly side of the beach, right directly adjacent to the jetty. And then, there are several other individual parcels, some of which are owned by New Silver Beach Association, some of which are owned by individuals. Back in 2012, there was beach maintenance performed. And what that means is they want to have permission to rake, clean, screen the beach, similar to how the town does their own beaches like Falmouth Heights Beach. This all occurred in 2012. They're ready to do it again, and we intend to go back to Conservation Commission. And since not all of the work is on the beach controlled by the association, such as the town beach here, we need your permission to allow us to name you as one of the participants in the beach cleaning activity, as well as the other individual private property owners. So, the activities would be mechanically raking and screening to remove seaweed and smooth out areas of the beach to make the beach more user-friendly for beachgoers. All the work would be performed above mean high water, which would be a requirement of Conservation Commission. The plan you see in front of you is actually the plan from 2012 that describes that with notes. This is basically a redo of a permit that has expired. So, we're hopeful that you could allow the town to participate. If not, we would be in a position where we'd have to stop the cleaning at your property.
Great, thank you. Any questions? Maybe if we can take down the shared screen?
Okay.
Just so I can see everybody. Any questions from anyone on the board about that? Doug Jones?
Is this again another two-step process where we first have to approve that we get to be part of the application, and then it goes concom, and then comes back to us again for our approval?
In this case, I don't believe so, because all the activities are above mean high water. So, just acquiescing and allowing, giving permission to participate would be the extent of your involvement. And then Conservation Commission could act on it without any further involvement by the Board of Select.
So, it just means we don't know what the Order of Conditions are that we're agreeing to?
If you prefer, we can come back to you after the Order of Conditions is approved and share it with you.
I'm not sure it's necessary, but I just wanted to-
Great, thank you. Any other questions, Sue?
Sure. So, I'm looking at it, any type of license for that use of the beach in the past. It looks like it's fairly contiguous, and I don't know whether there might be an insurance issue or a, any kind of use issue. So, I'm not sure if you've had a chance to speak with Town Council about that.
I myself have not had any conversations with Town Council about that, but that's something we could do.
Okay, great. Just to check, I mean, I know you've done this project in the past, but we can double-check to make sure that that's taken care of. Any other questions from the board? Okay. Mr. Johnson Staub, has anyone else joined who wishes to speak on this matter?
I know that David O'Keefe is with us by phone. I don't know if he wishes to speak. This would be the time to speak up.
Sure, yes, thank you. So, I represent the Silver Beach Improvement Association, which is, you know, our application. I appreciate, you know, your consideration in this. And essentially, what we're trying to do is just continue the, you know, the maintenance of, you know, a wonderful asset and, you know, keep it up for the community and the neighborhood as we have been, you know, in the past. And we'll, you know, follow the, you know, the Order of Conditions issued by Conservation Commission and, you know, ensure we stay true to that, you know, intent. And if you have any other questions, I'm happy to address those.
Great, thank you. Any questions for Mr. O'Keefe?
No.
No? Okay.
Has there been any liability dealt with before this beach? Sounds like it's gonna be cleaned and then used by the area. Is it a beach that we are liable for that kind of cleaning, or is the cleaning is done improperly?
Julian, or, I don't know, Frank is on, but-
I don't know the answer to that, but Frank is with us as an attendee, and we could bring him in to have him comment, Madam Chair.
Great, we could do that. And I know we're dropping a question in his lap that we haven't given him time to reflect on, but any guidance he could give us would be helpful.
Frank is on mute, so he'll have to-
There he is. Frank, did you hear that particular question?
I did, and of course, we would want to make sure that the work was done in accordance with the terms of the Order of Condition. And probably would also want to have the town engineer go out and inspect the work when it's done and certify that it's so conform.
Great. Does that-
Now, we can also, at the same time, I think, may have been brought up a little earlier, but we can also ask the applicant to sign an indemnification agreement before they do the work.
I have one question now.
Yep, done.
Boselli, are you hired to supervise and oversee the project to its completion?
I am not. My role is to prepare the plan, file the application, and obtain the approval from the Conservation Commission. And subsequently, when the work's done, I would request a certificate of compliance from Conservation Commission. But I haven't been hired to do the, you know, any more like onsite supervision of work.
Okay. We do have a grounds committee chairperson who will ultimately be responsible for ensuring, you know, the execution and a subcommittee as well to, you know, to support that person. So, there'll be a number of people that are, you know, paying attention to it to make sure that things are done, you know, correctly in accordance with the conditions that are stated.
Okay. So, any other questions? Great. So, I would entertain any motion.
Will we close the hearing?
Okay.
It actually is not a formal hearing.
No.
Just the administrative order under summary of actions.
Okay.
I move that we permit the New Silver Beach Improvement Association to remove seaweed from the town parcel 04A 41 000098 at New Silver Beach in accordance with an Order of Conditions issued by the Conservation Commission in contingent upon their submittal of an indemnification statement to the town.
Okay. That's the motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? Anything else Mr. O'Keefe or Mr. Boselli would want to say about with that addition of the indemnification?
No, thank you.
No, thank you.
Great. I'm gonna do a vote by roll call. English Frogger, aye. Brown?
Brown, aye.
Moran?
Moran, aye.
Jones?
Jones, aye.
Patterson?
Patterson, aye.
Great, thank you, and we appreciate it. Thank you, Frank, for jumping in on that.
Okay.
Next.
It's nice to see you, friendly faces.
Nice to see you, too.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. Vote to authorize and accept Massachusetts Department of Conservation and Recreation Challenge Grant in the amount of $10,000 for Falmouth Tree Health/Risk Planning, Planting, and Project. I know that we, that Jeremiah Pearson was on earlier, our park superintendent.
He's available.
Okay. If we could bring him on, and we can ask him about this particular grant.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you, we can see you. So, if you want to tell us a little bit about what this challenge grant, what it is, and why it would benefit us.
Well, pretty much, this will provide a private consultant to come in and perform a tree health risk survey on all 218 miles that are bordered with town shade trees. And then, that will help us prioritize and identify atmospheres, maintenance need for trees, removals, and then eventually a planting plan.
Great. Does he provide that by way of sort of a final document that you're able to?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep, and that we can use that as time goes on and work off that and be more proactive instead of reactive.
Great. Where does, can you tell us where this expert, I'm just trying to see, where is he or she out of?
Well, we would have to go out to bid for that.
Oh, I got you. Okay, so you get the grant money and you put it out to bid. Okay? Questions from anyone on the board? Sue?
Thanks. Is it contemplated that the list will be published so that folks who have a budding property would be able to take a look and see how the project worked?
Yeah, actually, this is, we can use this for our community efforts, too. So, this will, people can look at this, definitely. And it can also help get, you know, community planting efforts underway as well, because we'll need people to help us plant after all the risk trees are removed.
Right.
So, that's part of this.
Great, great. And there are, I'm looking at the letter, it doesn't seem like there's any requirement or matching funds required by the town, so there's no sort of buy-in that we have to-
There is matching funds, $10,000.
Say, could you say that one more time?
Matching funds of $10,000. That's already been appropriated to the cap role request.
Okay. All right, I'm sorry, I didn't see that in this letter. So, okay. So, it'd just be adding $10,000 to what we are already going to do.
Correct.
Okay. Any other questions from the board? No? Okay, great. So, I have, so tonight, why don't we have Sam, if you'll do all motions, and Sue, if you will second them, if you don't mind, just for time's sake. So, do I have a motion on this?
Happy to. Do we have any comments for the public?
Peter?
We do not have any comments from the public.
All right, thank you.
Therefore, I move to authorize and accept Massachusetts Department of Conservation and Recreation Challenge Grant in the amount of $10,000 for Falmouth Tree Health/Risk Planning and Planting Project.
Second. All is in favor by roll call. Patterson?
Patterson, aye.
Moran?
Aye.
Brown?
Brown, aye.
Jones?
Jones, aye.
English Frogger, aye. Great, thank you so much, Jeremiah, I really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Good job, thanks.
Okay. Next, we have Frank Duffy will give us a little bit of some background information, but this is a vote to accept an offer to buy and authorize Town Manager to execute a purchase and sale agreement for the sale of the Lieutenant Pat Pafford lot in Palm Coast, Florida, to benefit the Lieutenant James M. Pafford SA Fund of Falmouth High School in accordance with the authority of Article 52 of the October 1989 Town Meeting. So, longstanding property issue that's been going on. Welcome, Frank, again. Thank you.
Megan and Frank Duffy, Town Council, this is a rather unusual circumstance, but the town of Falmouth actually has an ownership interest in a piece of land in Florida. It came about, James Pafford was a real estate agent and developer in Falmouth, and he worked here for many years. And he built the White House next to Town Hall where Bob Memmott's office is today. But he retired and moved to Florida in the early 1980s, and then he passed away. And earlier, he had a son, Lieutenant James Paff, who was, I believe, died in the Korean War. And he had established a SA fund at the Falmouth High School, which he funded with some cash and some stock, I believe. But in his will, when he passed away, he left an interest in this property to the town of Falmouth, with the instructions that whatever we could get for the sale of it should be used to fund the SA fund at the high school. The fund, I've been told, actually exists in the treasurer's office. Although, I don't know how much money's in it, but it is there. Now, in 1989, the town meeting authorized the Board of Selectmen to sell the property. And subsequently, it has been listed for sale with real estate brokers in the Palm Coast, Florida area several times. Not really ever gotten any serious offers for it. We've had a few offers that came in from speculators, which I would classify as kind of low-ball offers. We- We anyways, we really had nothing that attracted our attention or just, or moved us to sell the property. It was, it was a very slow neighborhood. This is a small residential subdivision. It's not waterfront property at all. Finally, the, the property is currently, like, like you know, that the property is currently assessed for only thirteen thousand five hundred dollars. Finally, I, I reached out to the city of Palm Coast, Florida, to their law department down there, and I asked them to, to give us some help trying to sell this property. So they lined us up with an associate, actually, I think of their firm, they, they have a private firm that's the attorney for the city, who took it over, took a look at it, went out, took a look, came back and said the property's worth about fifteen to eighteen thousand dollars. And they agreed to list it and see what we could get. So we did get a, I did that at the end of last year, by the way. So we did get an offer of eighteen thousand dollars from a firm called JM Properties of Palm Coast, Florida. The transaction is being handled through a title insurance company, the Pioneer Title Insurance Company, also of Palm Coast, Florida. It's a cash offer, no mortgage, no contingencies. It is the responsibility of the town to produce a a commitment for a policy of title insurance and to close it with title insurance. The total cost, legal cost is seven fifty plus the title insurance policy, which I think will be pretty modest. In the days, I used to be an issuing agent, you could get a policy of eighteen thousand pretty cheaply. There's no broker's commission involved. And I think, given the passage of time, the level of interest in this property, which is very, very limited over the years, it just makes sense to take this offer, have the authorized account manager to sign a purchase and sale agreement and see if we can close it and fund the account, and then the high school can start awarding some prizes for the, for the SA fund.
Right. And, and just in time for the Memorial Holiday, although I know it won't be closed by them, but it's timely in really recognizing this individual. So I think if there, are there any questions from the board about this? I just want to thank you, Frank, for staying on top of something. These things sometimes just get lost. But obviously, this was, you know, something that meant a lot to Mr. Pafford to commemorate his son and to make sure that he, his legacy went on at Falmouth High School. So thank you for, for following up on it. We really appreciate it. Any questions from the board?
I move we vote to accept the offer to buy and authorize the town manager to exercise a purchase and sale agreement for the sale of the Lieutenant Pafford lot in Palm Coast, Florida to benefit the Lieutenant James M. Pafford SA Fund of Falmouth High School in accordance with the authority of Article fifty-two of the October nineteen eighty-nine town meeting.
Second.
Hey, all, any further discussion?
Just that Mr. Pafford was a pretty good guy, I guess. Thanks a lot to him for doing that. He built another house over on Sitters Pond Road, where it looks a lot like the building next to town hall. So I guess that was his home.
Great. So by roll call, I guess, let's see, Sam Patterson?
Patterson, aye.
Moran?
Moran, aye.
Brown?
Brown, aye.
English Frogger, aye, and Jones?
Jones, aye.
Thank you. Okay. Under seven thirty business, we have, thank you, Frank, very much. Under seven thirty business, we have interview, vote, and appoint committee member, Conservation Commission alternate member, Pat Harris. So if we can bring Pat on board.
He is on the call. Should be here momentarily.
Great. I'm just looking for my paperwork that shows, hi, Pat, how are you?
Hi.
You just addressed Frank. Welcome. So you really couldn't stay away long, could you?
No. The town has been so good to me. I wanted to see if I could give something back.
Well, thank you. This is, I'm just trying to look, this looks like it's for a position, let's see.
Conservation Commission.
Alternate, yeah, term ending six thirty twenty twenty-two, right?
Yes, that's correct.
Great. Okay. So I think folks are familiar with Pat, who really served for a long time. Worked with, with Frank, and we miss her and all of her advocates for the town, but certainly very familiar with the town of Falmouth, with a lot of the issues that became, that arose probably from conservation. Not picking on them, but that's always a hot button commission. So certainly has the, the background knowledge. And does anyone have questions for, for Pat? I'm just taking a look at, we have your application.
Throw one out there.
Yep.
Obviously, Pat, we obviously know your background in legal matters. Do you have any kind of interest in conservation, or is this just a way to help us out?
No, I, I do have an interest in conservation. Ironically, my undergraduate degree is in botany and is veered towards environmental law and environmental issues. So, no, I, I believe that, you know, our wetland resources are our most valuable resource, and I would love to contribute to whatever I can to the commission as a member, not as a lawyer, but as a member.
Good.
Yes, I have a strong interest in the environment.
Good to hear. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions from any other board members? Yes, Sam?
Just a comment. I mean, really, Pat has brought, is bringing a huge legacy of supporting various Conservation Commission rulings. She's looked out for the interests of the town for quite some time. I, I can remember a few of them, but they're not always been easy ones to deal with, and the town hasn't necessarily prevailed. But I think we'll be well-served by having you as an associate, as an alternate member, if, if not a consultant.
Well, thank you, Sam. I appreciate that.
Well, I, I move that we appoint Pat Harris as an alternate position for a term ending June thirtieth of twenty twenty-two.
Second. Okay. I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor by roll call. Patterson?
Patterson, aye.
Moran?
Moran, aye.
Brown?
Brown, aye.
Jones?
Jones, aye.
English Frogger, aye. Well, congratulations. Retirement looks very good on you, so. We hope it stays that way. Thank you.
I'm looking forward to it. Thanks, everybody. Take care. Bye-bye.
Great. Coming up next, we have a discussion of update on COVID-nineteen issues. And I think what we'll do is we'll start by hearing from, excuse me, our health agent, Scott McGann. If we can bring him on board.
Be here in a moment.
Great. Thank you. Less than a moment. Hi, Scott. How are you? Welcome.
How you doing?
Good. So if, if you just want to start by whatever you think we need to be updated on, and, and then we can go from there in terms of questions and so forth.
Yeah, we'll do mostly questions. I think it's, what's, what's going on now is pretty bittersweet. I mean, the, the good is, there's really little infections occurring sort of in the community. However, where we're getting it is at a long-term care facility. So in the sense that it's not sort of like, you know, random sort of occurrences from going to the local grocery store, things like that, it's happening all in sort of one spot. Problem is, that's not happening.
Right.
It's, I'm talking to Sean O'Brien at the county hall last week. It's pretty much, we're consistent with every, with most other places. Where the cases are occurring, it's a long-term care, at least around, around the Cape anyway. And not nearly anything much going on elsewhere. And so that's kind of where we're at with the cases, where you would take around one, one hundred and sixty cases with at least, you know, eighty, eighty-five percent of recovery from it. So, you know, we don't have a lot of active caseload of sort of managing contacts and things like that from any place that's not a long-term. Long-term care facilities get clustered into a single event. And that's kind of what we're going with, with ours. And so they just did some more testing there on Sunday, so probably tonight overnight or tomorrow, we're still getting a lot of those results in. So hopefully, we don't have any, anymore. I think we're somewhere around nineteen out of so.
Can you, can you tell us, Scott, what, just for people who don't know, what are their, how are they doing their testing? Like, are they doing it every few days, once a week? Sort of what have been the testing protocols there?
The details, I actually, they work directly with the state. They're licensed by the state, so they're doing mostly with the state. I know two, two weekends ago, so not last weekend, past week, week before. The National Guide came out and did a sweep of testing. So now it's going to be probably ten, ten or, probably going about twice a week. And basically looking at symptomatics. Their protocol's set by an epidemiologist at the state, you know, so I'm not telling them how often they need to test. They do regularly. And so what we're doing is we just recreate the, recreate the Maven cluster and, and, you know, stay on top of what they're doing over there at the center, but really they're controlled by the state. And unfortunately, they seem to, I think this had a lot to do with, sometimes the tests, you come back as negative and tested positive the second time. And if you have a young, healthy person working at one of these facilities, and even though you, you know, you start testing and they're not coming back as a positive, and then they come back as a positive four days later, well, that person worked with twelve, you know, twelve different residents. There you go. You have twelve residents. And that's kind of what's happening with this. And, you know, it's only been, what, ten, fifteen weeks? And, you know, you can't, sometimes these tests don't, aren't perfect at the beginning, especially these tests. And, and some people just, those asymptomatics really sometimes don't seem to be showing positive on the tests, and then eventually they do. But, you know, it's too late at that point. And that's kind of the, the difficulty with this. And, you know, hopefully, you know, we can get, you know, not us personally, but, you know, get our minds wrapped around and then sort of figure out what to do with these, these long-term care facilities. Cause they do account for sixty percent of the deaths, count for vast majority of hospitalizations, they count for, you know, they're the biggest problem that we have right now. You know, don't have a solution for it.
Any, go ahead, Sam.
Yeah, Scott, are they not, are the employees not required to wear masks that are enough to keep those droplets from transferring?
They were, they are. They are. That, that, that's not a hundred percent. I mean, you know, the masks, they're not wearing, they're not going with the N-95 per se. You know, that's where things I think need to be reinvented at that level. I think they were caught, I think, you know, to say in general, I'm not saying this particular facility. I'd say in general, they might have been caught, caught off guard with the amount of PPE and the amount of, you know, N-95s that they need to wear consistently when dealing with the patients during even a normal flu season. I mean, to be honest with you, I think three or four facilities in town where they, they had to isolate patients, the residents during the flu. This was December, early January. So that happens quite a bit in these facilities. And so maybe the, one of the solutions are that we start doing, you know, during the seasons, especially during COVID, more of the, more of the wearing of the, the N-95s. So I, I mean, we don't, as health agents, we generally don't get into the detail. That's really the sort of the responsibility, because we don't license, towns don't license their long-term care.
Right.
So, you know, any information I get is sort of anecdotal of the caseload. And they do notify me when they have positives, you know, so. I mean, that's the bad, the real bad news. The good news is I'm not seeing new cases at this point, at least for the last ten days. And that's really encouraging. And that just tells you, like you said last time, Sam, I remember what you said about, you know, when you congratulate, that's like, I don't want to take any credit for it, because I didn't want to take credit for it if it wasn't going well. But it just means that in town, we're doing a really good job with. And in general, I actually took my first road trip to get some, my daughter's garden was needed to be planted, so we got, got some, did a road trip to get some plants. And we definitely did better than the other town I went to off Cape to get some stuff. So, you know, I think in general, we did probably be far better job than most towns did with social distancing and all.
You did give us a little credit in your Friday report.
I have a question. Yes. Scott, what is the end game in the nursing homes? Are we going to reach a point where the virus has passed through the facility and we're going to be able to allow family members back in? Or is there a plan to allow family members in?
That would be, that would be the very last of the different phases that Governor outlined. That would be like the very end, the new, even at the new normal, that was going to be a tough one. Just because of the asymptomatic. I mean, some of the, some of the long-term care that didn't get hit, they just got lucky that someone that wasn't asymptomatic, right? So when you're talking about the public, let's, let's say your average residency sees, you know, maybe six or seven people during lockdown, you know, different shifts and things like that. Now you're opening up the families walking through, you're really, you're starting to have tent holes. So that's, unfortunately, I think a lot of people in a lot of the residents would probably say they want to see their family, obviously, right? You know, they don't want to be there in two years or a year and a half or some ridiculous time.
And I think the family members are fearful that without their support, the, the people in the nursing homes are going to be not doing as well. Not because they're not getting the right treatment that they need, but they're not getting that love connection and that, those little details that they do, they bring them flowers, they make sure they have their own and their water and all the things. You know, the little personal touches that make their lives more fulfilled. So I wonder how, seems like as soon as possible, it would be great to at least be able to designate somebody as a family member that could, could come in there. But do you see that happening anytime soon?
Well, I think if you, as the testing gets better, sure. I guess if you can get a more rapid test and a really accurate rapid, you know, fifteen-minute test that tells you yea or nay, or at least some sort of an, well, antibody tests are only good for retroactively knowing if somebody was infected. It's not, it's not something that works very well to know whether Doug and I can go out or not and, you know, interact or something. It's really so retroactive. But I mean, I guess maybe perhaps once they know more about the antibody testing and then they get a rapid test, then that would be possible. But I don't see that happening anytime soon.
And, and I do know that, you know, a lot of facilities are doing the best that they can. It's not a substitute, but I know that they're doing this type of stuff. They're, they're trying to do FaceTime and, and Zoom, you know, using the old technology that the, that the place I know, because my grandmother is at Rome Against It. And, and they're setting up Zoom calls so that they can at least sort of see their family members face to face. But obviously, it's really challenging, because those populations, I mean, I think what you're trying to say, Doug, is if it goes through, neither people have had it or they haven't. But the population of nursing homes, the long-term care, congregate living really changes all the time, because people are coming in because their needs are changing and they're, and they're there sometimes for a longer period of time or, and sometimes obviously for shorter rehabilitative, you know, stint. So those, that population is really dynamic with the residents. So it's not as if you could kind of go through and say, everybody here has either had it, you know, or they, you know, that they've had it and they survived it, or they moved to a different facility or whatever it might be. It's always changing. So it's really, that risk is just consistently there. But I know that most places are doing the best they can. I can say that I've heard that, you know, our local, some of our local places have been very good about constantly calling family members with, a lot of times it's robocalls, but telling them almost on a every-other-day basis, how many people have been tested, how many people are positive, you know, what their protocol is. So, you know, I think they're doing the best that they can. But I saw Sue, did you have your hand up?
Yeah. Thank you, Scott. So it, it sounds like there's, I think you said kind of no new cases, you know, except for the great concern about the vulnerable population. So it seems like there's a bit of cautious optimism with the general population. My question is, what are we doing to get ready for the onslaught of folks from, you know, coming in for Memorial Day weekend? And, you know, in terms of really reminding folks how serious we are about social distancing, our rules about masks. You know, the idea of, you know, make sure you, I, I've seen in other places, I think Senator Sears done a lot of publicizing, make sure you bring everything you need with you, because you can't go to the store for fourteen days or, you know, and I know the governor just is rolling out the new, the new rules. But how does, you know, how does Memorial Day weekend, what, what are you running around crazy busy with getting, getting ready for that?
Well, I think the thing we've been talking the most about is the beaches, you know, trying to get them, spending a lot of time trying, Julian and myself, Peter and Maggie, the chiefs, trying to figure out the best way to do the beaches. I mean, that's one. I mean, the other things, I haven't really thought of it in terms of what we're going to do differently for Memorial Day, but we're just going to follow the same guidance that we're getting from the state. I don't have anything particular for, I know, we've been getting a fair amount of complaints of what we're going to do when, you know, you know, we go from the thirty-three thousand to whatever number. Now, the governor is not allowing long-term, short-term rentals as of yet. So it's going to depend. So we're not going to have necessarily the same slot that we probably thought we would have. So it's gonna depend. So we're not gonna have necessarily the same slot that we probably thought we would have, just because you're not gonna have long-term rentals till somewhere in stage two.
Right, which is, it was just, I mean, that's all motels, hotels, I mean, nothing is open.
Right, so they open up motels, they're also gonna be opening up that. Now, so I, I wouldn't know at this point what exactly, you know, what different thing we can do. Um, it's really gonna be about, you know, it doesn't matter whether the person comes from, you know, there's, comes, comes on vacation or not, we all have to follow the same social distancing and the same, you know, number of seats that are gonna be allowed at a particular restaurant, or so we're just gonna have to stay diligent on that as, as the population chooses. Um, and um, you know, just see what happens with the phase. Yeah, there's always gonna be a concern that you're bringing in, the more people you bring in from dis- different areas, you know, your infection rates, but you're gonna introduce some. And I would definitely say, I mean, there's a little doubt that of course there's gonna be somewhat of an increase with the more activity. I think that's a pretty safe, safe assessment. And the goal is, okay?
Quick, quick follow-up. You mentioned the beaches, and, you know, I, I was, you know, just wondering your thought process about, you know, making visibility for the rules, so that um, we're sure that the, you know, folks whose job it is just to really, you know, uh, let folks in, or look at um, stickers, you know, don't, you know, it's kind of reminds me of like the umpire situation where, you know, in, in games, you can have a, a, you know, maybe a younger person, and, and the game goes haywire and, and the crowd, you know, gets upset. So I, I'm just looking up, what are, what are the ways that we can really get in front of any of those situations? I know our, our police department, you know, i- is already extremely busy and, and we haven't yet opened the beaches. So I'm, I'm wondering what your thought process is there as well?
Uh, I think Julian, myself, Peter, and Maggie, what do we have, about six hours into talking about this? So we've got a lot of time into it, you know, but, so, I don't know if I want, you want me to comment?
Yeah, and. Maybe Peter, maybe if Peter could just talk about some of the ideas. I know there's a meeting going on, on Wednesday of this week that we're gonna talk further about real specifics, but Peter, if you wanted to sort of speak to the, that general question that I think Sue's getting at is, you know, really looking out for those employees and making that communication. Uh, you know, how do we communicate the rules in advance so that that individual isn't the messenger all the time?
Right. No, I, um, mostly what I wanted to say is thank you, Sue. I really appreciate that question, because it's something that we're very concerned about. And we're gonna try to do as much as we can, so that lifeguards can be lifeguards and parking attendants can be parking attendants, and try to mitigate as much as possible the opportunities for misunderstanding and conflict. Uh, but that said, Megan, if you want to um, defer more of this conversation to either the next agenda item, or as you said, we don't necessarily want to get too far ahead on the beach details, because we do have that uh, other meeting tomorrow to discuss some of those details with members.
Is it tomorrow or Wednesday?
Sorry, Wednesday.
Well, okay. Um, yeah, but just, I think, so that people know, I think what Sue's asking is probably what a lot of people are kicking around in their head, because we have a holiday weekend coming up. Um, you know, what, DPW's been part of the conversation, uh, the chief, Julian, Peter, Scott, uh, Maggie from Beach Department, um, and we're gonna have another meeting, we're gonna have folks from Beach Committee. Um, and I think Doug Brown and I are gonna be part of that conversation as Chair and Vice Chair about really, again, looking at how do we have the beaches open, um, you know, for the upcoming holiday weekend? Um, and do that in a way that is safe and that is manageable, and that also frankly, you know, this time of year, even if this wasn't going on, um, staffing is always a challenge, right? The first few weeks of the summer, um, sometimes staffing, you know, we're staffing up. Right now, we have a lot of college students who are not in college, so in some ways, we're in um, a better position than we might be, um, you know, in some years, but um, obviously, we're not at full staff, and Beach wouldn't, and wouldn't, um, you know, I know, because I've, I've talked about this with Bruce McGarrett on many occasions, they wouldn't have even done their, in a normal year, they wouldn't have done their full training by now. Um, that they're, they sort of work up at that end of May and then, and, and to the June, into June. So um, it's really balancing, you know, that staffing issues and public safety, and um, you know, I think that those, we'll have that specific information when we kind of drill down a little bit more on Wednesday, but I know a lot of ideas have been put out there um, and have been, you know, really vetted by Scott, Maggie, and, and all the other folks, DPW have been involved. Um, I saw Sam and then Sue again. Sam?
Yeah, I know this is not foolproof, but I think the uh, electrical sign that uh, was put up for the main roads that come into Falmouth, reminding people of the kinds of practices. I, I don't think it's inappropriate for us to appeal to people to wear a mask if you can't stay six feet away from so, other people. You know, let's, let's make an effort at least to solicit their cooperation, uh, because it's a, it, it is, there are gonna be new infections, unfortunately. There are so many asymmetric, asymptomatic people that come in, and, you know, that they're not necessarily doing anything deliberately, but this happened.
Sue and then Doug Jones.
Hey, Sam, I think that's a great idea. The, you know, the, what I have in mind is a long pond, right? There's this pent-up um, excitement about, you know, the whatever, and, and folks don't always know exactly what the steps are, they know there's some kind of opening, and so I think that um, and, you know, there's two things. One is this sort of a pent-up um, excitement, and there's also the, you know, the potential upside, that if we really raise all of our presence to sort of an overemphasis of seriousness, it's kind of an imprint, and it kind of gets around and it's kind of reported on. And then I think folks get the new protocol, even though it's, it's really difficult, and it's a whole new world, so I guess that, that would be my thought as this gets rolled out.
And just one, sorry Doug, I'll go right to one thing, it just made me think of it, is uh, Julian and I spoke about this, we'll speak more on Wednesday. Um, you know, we have an opportunity as people come and buy beach passes. Um, you know, beach stickers or passes if they're buying them, you know, for periods of time that they're visiting. That's, you know, an absolutely captured audience for this communication. So we do have um, an ability to, to really get that messaging out um, in a way that, that um, is gonna get directly to people who are then using our facilities. So um, there, there'll be some discussion about that. So, um, Doug, Jones.
I wanna agree with both Sue and Sam about really getting the message out about the correct way to do this. Uh, but if the conversation does come up, and I understand this can be a decision of Doug and Megan and Julian, not of the board, um, I would push hard for the parking lots to be open this weekend.
Thank you. Um, and I, and I do think that that's, Julian, do you want to speak to that?
Certainly, I'm happy to. Um, as uh, the board's aware, traditionally, we've opened um, Old Silver Beach on Memorial Day weekend, and uh, well, we anticipate uh, uh, subject to the discussion we've referred to on Wednesday afternoon, we're making all preparations to open the parking lot at Old Silver Beach. Obviously, we won't have lifeguards there and on duty. Um, but uh, having said that, we also anticipate a necessary cutback uh, in uh, capacity of the parking lot, consistent with the uh, basically the directive of the Governor in terms of social distancing and, and keeping down group size and managing the area of the beaches that are utilized. The only way that we can really effectively do that is by properly uh, managing the capacity of the municipal parking areas. So we're actively involved in that discussion and considering the figure of uh, at least at this juncture, fifty percent of the capacity, uh, so that we can observe uh, social distancing and, and determine whether or not uh, people are cooperating with uh, the Governor's uh, mandate really for social distancing and the wearing of masks that was reaffirmed today in the report that we'll talk about uh, here in a few minutes. So uh, that is the process we're following. And we're also anticipating uh, the potential opening with um, staff members that are monitoring the parking areas at perhaps six other of our beaches. Uh, we probably do not have adequate staff to do all eleven, uh, but we're looking at doing six, uh, and facilitating again, with reduced municipal parking, facilitating the uh, public return to the parking areas and ultimately, uh, the beaches. But uh, we're trying to be a bit cautious, as the Governor has requested, uh, because we want to be careful that uh, things are uh, you know, are properly, the, the guidelines are properly followed, social distancing particularly, the wearing of masks as well. And as has been uh, noted by Megan and others, as we sell beach stickers at the Ellen Mitchell Bath House, which we anticipate uh, beginning this weekend as well, be an opportunity to remind folks about what our uh, protocols are and the expectations that we have to maintain um, as much as humanly possible, uh, a good semblance of uh, healthy relationships, even as the uh, population of the town expands.
Uh, I have a question for Scott on a different matter.
Any, oh, go ahead, Doug.
Uh, Scott, what do you think about testing on the local level? Do you see any large-scale uh, testing coming for Falmouth? A, a lot of people are curious whether or not they've been exposed.
So, so to answer that question, are you talking antibody testing or regular testing, the actual? Alright, so.
Whatever might be coming.
Body testing's gonna be flooding the market, you know, they're gonna, you're gonna see plenty of that, we've getting some tests come in. Um, I think what's happening now is, you know, with our infection rate being completely different, and let's take another town like Chelsea. So Chelsea's got an infection rate of like three percent or four percent, where, you know, some huge amount of numbers lower than that. So they're focusing their testing on the hotspots. So the state's not coming to Falmouth and saying, let's come in and do some more aggressive testing. And we're, you know, I'd be working with Sean O'Brien at the county to sort of, let's say you have a Falmouth s- s- specific testing for COVID here, we wanted, they're gonna do it at places with this high infection rate. So right now, that we're not in an area of high infection rate, so we're not really doing anything extra as far as the testing goes or the criteria. Now, in a town, let's say, like Chelsea, because that's the highest one we have, they're going out and trying to find as many people they can test. Right, so they're focusing on that, because they're gonna get those numbers down before they worry about us that have a very lower infection rate compared to the, compared to the general population in town. Right, so that makes sense? So, so, you know, take a ten, fifteen towns that are the hottest, there, that's where most of those tests are being done.
Well, I guess in the short term, we'll just have to extrapolate their numbers and apply them to our.
We're, we're not doing anything different than we have, and you can still go down to, you know, if you're not, you're not feeling well, you can still go down to Four Seasons to be tested, that's still open. That's gonna remain open. So that's, we're, we're the same as what we've been. We're not actually going out looking as much for asymptomatic here than we would be in the hotspots, right? So that, that would start to flood more. I haven't gotten any information directly from the state to say that, hey, can we start testing more out?
But the average person can't just show up at Four Seasons and say, I'd like to be tested. You have to get sent by your doctor and be showing symptoms, isn't that correct?
As it stands now, yes. But it's, they get more and more tests in for that, you know, we're, we're not looking at it, they're not looking at us, so. They're not worried about us, they're much worried about, you know, the other locations, right?
But it seems like.
You can get your own antibody test, though. You can go through, quest diagnostic, and you can pay the hundred and nineteen dollars, and you can just book it yourself to find out if you've had COVID. Now, obviously, there's not a hundred percent accuracy, and there's some people have some concerns about, you know, false negatives, but um, as long as you are not actively showing symptoms, and they'll ask you those questions as you're as you're making that appointment, you just do it on your phone, you don't even talk to an individual, um, and the results come via um, app to your phone, and you can, you can do that. So if people really are, they think they've had it and they're really concerned and they want to do that, um, you don't need to go through your doctor at all for that.
And another, another thing, Doug, is, 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 let's just say, testing asymptomatic people. You might be asymptomatic for forty-eight hours, thirty-six hours, seventy-two hours. So you'd have to catch that symptomatic stage at the right time in order to be tested for it, to be one of those asymptomatic for three weeks or four weeks, Jeff. It's usually a smaller. Or not. But so, like, you know, that's why I think in, in the hotspots, you want to catch everybody who's asymptomatic, because that's the only way you're gonna, you know, put a lid on it. But it'll, it'd be limited effectiveness doing it here.
But aren't we gonna need widespread testing before we can really get a handle on opening? So how's that gonna come? We're gonna wait for the state to come and do it, or?
I, well, I'm at this point, you would have, I would have to figure out how to do that, because we're not at that point where we've.
Thanks for asking that question, Doug.
Any other questions from the board for Scott? Okay, thank you.
Chair, can I read?
Very much, Scott. I don't know. Oh, go ahead, Julian.
I, I was just gonna ask Scott, um, of course, he just completed a Board of Health virtual meeting, and I didn't know if um, there are any developments there, Scott, that would be um, helpful to report on?
Well, most of it was boring septic systems. I'm sure you don't want to be.
Yay, thank goodness for septic system.
The normal things, you'd be surprised how much you seek out the normal stuff like that.
Yeah.
Right.
Oh, the one thing we did, um, is just to let you know how we canceled all our events. The one event that, you know, that we normally do, it's not a fun event, is the household has this waste collect. Um, especially with a lot of people cleaning out their basements, because they're bored, like, you know, I've done that. We've got a lot of stuff we need to get rid of, so we are gonna still have that. If you've ever been to one, you don't get out of your car.
Right.
So there's already built-in social distancing. So that'll be what I think, uh, the, the thirteenth of yeah, thirteenth of June, um, that collection's gonna be a go, and that's gonna be the four towns, uh, Upper Cape towns.
And will that be at Falmouth High School?
It's gonna be at Falmouth High School. We're gonna keep having it, just because there's gonna be, that stuff's gonna end up in the trash otherwise.
I got five tubs.
Yeah, we're still gonna have it, we're gonna have everybody in the car, that's already, it's kind of the event's already socialized. Because we don't want people getting out of the car, because we don't want them dealing with the hazardous materials and trying to empty it, that's why we already have a crew there. So that's gonna be a go.
Hey, Scott?
Yes.
For that event, could you just remind people that it isn't all materials, that if they have latex paint, they really don't want that brought to the hazardous waste, that that should be dealt with by drying it out, either with kitty litter or sand, and getting it into the regular trash.
I take it you've been to my, you've been to one of these before, and it got the lecture, because you sounded exactly like I would say. I must have had your wrist slapped for bringing in latex paint in the mess. But yeah, obviously, it's just the hazardous material, the oil-based paints, um, gasoline, um, pesticides, um, the real nasty stuff that's in those brown bottles from nineteen fifty-six. We'll take all those.
Right, and I'm sure you have a li- you'll have a link or information about it on the.
It's already on the website, because we planned this back in January, so this brochure is around. It's the same thing we do every year, same weekend. The other thing too is, if you did cancel it, you're still gonna have two hundred, you're gonna have a hundred and twelve guys show up, just because they were used to doing it that time, and the brochures have been out there. So we figured it's just best to have it.
And just to be clear, you don't accept any um, leftover medications or anything like that?
Oh, you can bring, actually, medications right at the, right at the police department, any given day, there's a kiosk there.
Right, but not at the hazardous waste? Okay.
Right. Thank you. Anything else for Scott?
You want me to stay for the, uh, the next topic?
If, if you want to, we're gonna kind of get an update and have a little bit of a conversation about it, so if you don't mind. Okay, thank you.
Good.
Great. Next, we have a preliminary discussion of Governor Baker's supplemental order and report of Governor's reopening advisory board. Um, obviously, the Governor um, outlined, and the Lieutenant Governor outlined the Phase One of the four-phase plan, um, with a little bit more detail today. I will say that if you only listened to the announcement, um, it was, um, you know, provided a decent amount of information, but I will say that the website um, actually is, is very well put together, and I think um, the Governors, the, the COVID section under reopening, really, I think, um, gave a lot more information about what's allowed to be reopened now and where things are going um, in the future. And there was a bit of an emphasis on um, industries that are gonna be in Phase Two, or Three, or Four, looking at that, um, now, bless you, Doug, to um, really think about some of the things that they need to do um, as they go forward. So um, I really encourage any uh, business owners or just the general public to take a look at the Governor's uh, the, the state website, because it has good information on it. Um, so I know we have Dylan Hernandez, who was in earlier. Was he able to stick with us, Peter? Okay, he'll be here in a minute.
Hey, Megan.
Hi, thanks for sticking with us. I know it's a little bit late.
That's okay.
I was gonna have you start by kind of letting us know, um, sort of whatever, you know, you think we need to know about this latest announcement from the Governor, and then we can go from there.
Sure, well, I'll um, uh, I'll be brief, but uh, you know, essentially, the Governor outlined today the Phase One of reopening, gone into details on a number of sectors, sectors that are, are allowed to reopen uh, immediately, and um, on May twenty-fifth, um, along with a whole host of other guidance. There's literally uh, hundreds, if not thousands, of pages of guidance, um, that we've been uh, combing through over the past, um, you know, several hours now, and we'll be continuing to get, to go through those um, throughout the week. Um, but you know, essentially, I think it's really important for folks to remember that Massachusetts is one of the hardest-hit states in the country. And, you know, behind New York and New Jersey, are probably the third hardest-hit state uh, in the country, and we're one of the uh, last states to, to have a, have a peak that was one of the hard-hit states. So. So I think it's, it's, you know, this is preliminary, a preliminary phase and things will, distancing measures will be put back in place if we see an uptick in cases. So to the earlier point that I heard folks making, you know, it, it is really, the most important thing we can do for our economy and for our businesses in Falmouth, on the Cape and Islands, and Massachusetts as a country, is to stop the spread of this disease. Because even if there are, even if you reopened everything today, right? A lot of people would not be patronizing businesses because they're, 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 of course, afraid of the significant risk with doing that. So the most important thing we can do for businesses is to keep people safe and control the spread. And to that point, there was a mention of testing. Now, right now, Massachusetts is testing around 15,000 people a day. That really needs to scale up significantly. And the goal is to get to 45,000 tests by, I believe it's around mid-July, and then by the end of the year, get to 75,000 tests. That's, you know, we're already leading the nation. We have a plan to, to further lead the nation on testing. But of course, comparing ourselves to the, the rest of the nation isn't, isn't the, the best benchmark. But we're still, you know, trying to plug away on this. And then the other piece of controlling the spread is around contact tracing. And that's another piece that's been significantly rolled out. And so those two together allow us to know who is sick and who they've come in contact with. So that people who are sick and the people that the person who was sick came in contact with are given, contacted by the state and given guidance and made sure that they aren't, make sure that they're staying home and quarantining and aren't interacting with people to slow the spread of the disease. So those are, you know, those two pieces, I think, you know, really need to be ramped up to everyone's point, but are the pieces that will allow us to kind of have a, have a really methodical, data-driven reopening. So what the governor announced today, again, just trying to, trying to kind of roll through all of the announcements. But kind of the, the top-line items, this is going to be a guided four-phase approach. We're in the first phase starting today. The phases, although they don't have a direct timeline, each one is around three weeks. And so, you know, for, for kind of reopening today, the governor, you know, they, they posted a, a pretty user-friendly kind of, whatever, infographic. But essentially, you know, starting today, we have manufacturing and construction being allowed with all the businesses that were already deemed essential. It's important to note that, that any business that wants to reopen needs to go through a checklist, a workplace checklist first and make sure they're complying with this workplace checklist that applies to every business before being able to open. And then they also have to comply with their, their business or industry-specific standards. So for businesses, those are, you know, manufacturing, construction open today. And then a number of, of other things are, are allowed to open that aren't kind of business-specific. But, you know, one of them, Houses of Worship, allowed to open today. So within the next week, by next Monday, a number of other businesses are also allowed to open. Lab space is one of the key ones, and that's something that Sumiran, I believe, some others on the call, we're on a call with, are, are, are biggest industries or, or at least our biggest kind of places where, where folks have jobs and, and kind of our research laboratories and scientific institutions. I know that was of top concern for them. So those are going to be able to open next week, along with this general office space at a certain capacity. And then a number of different personal services, from hair to pet grooming to car washes and the like. And all retail will be open for curbside pickup. So that's kind of first phase. And then phase two, there's a number of other pieces, probably the most important to our neck of the woods, is around restaurants and lodging. But there is a caveat there in that the working group has formed within the governor's task force to specifically look at restaurants and lodging. And there is, I, I think there's a real possibility that some announcement, announcements could be made about those two industries before phase two actually starts. And maybe there could be some announcements there within, within phase one. So kind of not business-related, there are a whole host of other items that received guidance today and a, and a timeline for opening on the 25th. But, you know, I heard a conversation earlier about beaches. There's extensive beach guidance, you know, from our neck of the woods. There's extensive kind of fishing guidance, both recreational and commercial. And like a whole host of other kind of parks and recreation guidance out there. And then from a health perspective, basically, it opens the door for you know, not, not necessarily like elective procedures, but, but it relaxes, it, it, the, the language is, is kind of ambiguous. But basically, it, it relaxes the, the standards for folks who need, who need healthcare. So folks who have been putting off important, important procedures and allows for certain types of preventative care. So those are kind of the main pieces, but this is all still under our current orders of just kind of being personally responsible, right? Like making sure we adhere to all of the important guidelines around, you know, wearing a mask when you can't socially distance. And, 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 and other pieces as well. Or, and, and I think the other, just kind of the last piece I'll, I'll note is around, you know, the state of home advisory is still in effect. And gatherings of more than 10 people are still not allowed. And then anyone coming into the state still has to abide by a 14-day quarantine. So those, those pieces are still very much in place. The last thing I'll say to the group is just, so if, you know, it's going to take a lot of time, I think, to kind of go through all of this guidance. But as concerns come up, if you would like to relay them to me or David Viera, both of us, Sue as well, hopefully starting tomorrow at, at 8:15. And, and also, I think it's, I think one thing that's really important to remember here is the Mass Municipal Association. I think will have a really strong voice in this. And so just reaching out to your representative there and, and just the, the MMA generally and, and making sure that Falmouth wants and needs are, are heard. I think that will be a really powerful advocacy tool as well. I know they're, they, they've had a, a really strong role in advocacy.
So Dylan.
I'll stop there.
Okay, no, I was going to say that you're, you know, you're, the last, first of all, thank you for the summary. And I think it's, it's really accurate that the material is voluminous, but it is fairly user-friendly. So people should go if they want to dive deep and really take a look at all of the guidelines or the, you know, the ones that pertain to what they're concerned with. I, I have a couple of questions. One is a little bit rhetorical and, and I sent this to you earlier today. But one thing I really want to make sure going forward, and you've pointed out one avenue with the MMA, but, you know, really making sure that the Cape's voice, because we are, you know, we are situated a little differently than a lot of other communities. And when I looked at the advisory board, you know, I see some Cape connections with someone from Cape Air. And, but, you know, to really think about the ways that we can advocate, and, and, you know, you, you mentioned MMA and other ways that you think of that you can pass on to us that we can really advocate for. Again, I absolutely agree, the safety and all of the data, you know, the data needs to drive what we're doing. But we're also trying to balance it. And I know you recognize this with the reality of businesses, what happens if they miss a full season? And so I was happy to hear about the subcommittee around lodging and sort of more service industries. And hopefully, you know, there are ways that we can look at those. Because, you know, when you look, especially in Falmouth, or, you know, really across the area, our lodging looks different, right? I mean, we have a few large resorts, but we also have a lot of smaller places that perhaps it would be easier for them to confirm, you know, really conform their work to some specific guidelines. And, and so hopefully, we're able to come up with ways that allow those businesses to open up before we've lost, you know, a larger part of the, the season. So just thinking of ways, if you're able to point us in the direction, you know, really advocating or individuals that we need to speak to that are connected with the advisory board or on some of these subcommittees, to make sure that they're hearing, you know, the specific requests that we have from the Cape and Islands, that would be helpful.
Yeah, so I mean, on that point, you know, I do think that you know, I do, I do think that we're, we're compared to the rest of the state actually relatively well-represented. I mean, if you look at the advisory board, there's 15 people on the entire board. Two of them are from the Cape and Islands. So I don't know, Doug, Doug's the math guy here. But, you know, what, I don't know, what is that, 15, 14? Somewhere between 10 and 15% of the boards made up by Cape and Islanders, but we're, we're, we're like, we only have 250,000 seasonal people in the state of 6 million. So, I mean, at least from a proportional perspective, we, you know, we're actually very well represented on the board. But I do think, you know, anything that we can, you know, I, I do think, you know, letting the, the Cape and Islands kind of reopening working group kind of know exactly the, the issues, I think that's really helpful for us to then relay to, to Linda and Wendy, who are the Cape and Islands board members on the, on the governor's task force. And also just relate to the, the governor's office more generally. I think, I think that's helpful, relaying it through the Cape and Islands, so through the Cape and Islands working group. And then also to the Mass Municipal Association, you know, we can, we can try and elevate those concerns as much as possible. And, you know, I, I, you know, one of the first presentations to the governor's task force was by Wendy Northcross at the Cape Cod Chamber. And this was literally on day two, I believe, that the commission formed to convey exactly this, that, you know, look, a lot of businesses have 12 months to stay solvent on the Cape and Islands. We have three, right? Sometimes two. So, you know, I think we've been trying to, you know, make a strong impression there. And we're hopeful that this kind of subset task force within the governor's task force will, will understand the urgency there.
Great, thank you. That's really helpful. I saw Doug Brown and then I think I saw Sue as well.
So Dylan, I'm hoping that you might stick around for our next agenda item, which is update on potential modified restaurant seating plans? Or if you think you need to go, maybe I can bend your ear now with regard to that.
Sure, I, yeah, yeah, feel free to, I mean, I, I would just say, anything, you know, anything, anything specific that you'd like us to share, it's, would be really helpful to just have that in writing. And I've already had a quick conversation with Mike Kisparian, I think, about exactly this issue that you're about to raise. So I have, I have some of the background on that. But anything, anything specific, if we just get that in writing, that we could then elevate, would probably be the most efficient and effective way to, to advocate for it.
Right.
And there's, there's actually, there's actually a couple of pieces of legislation as well around liquor licenses and, and outdoor seating pending in the legislature right now that, that I'm signing on to. So, you know, if there's a couple avenues there, I'm hopeful that this just gets done through the executive because I think that would just be the most efficient way to go about it. But if not, it's something that the legislature is actively looking at.
Okay, good, because that's exactly where I was.
On that, yeah.
Yeah, I think that's where Doug was. We, we had a meeting last week with the, you know, Mike Kisparian and a number of other departments talking about restaurant seating. And we'll, we'll touch on that as we go forward. But one of the things was around the issues of regulatory requirements and hoping that some loosening of those come along so that we could streamline, you know, if restaurants want to put out outdoor seating, that we can streamline that process. So it's good to hear that the legislature is also taking a look at it in case it does.
There's no question that needs to happen because I think right now, the process is like, in normal times, that process would be, yeah, exactly. I, I heard it's six to eight weeks. So yeah, months, months, it's a lot longer than that. But yeah, there's no question that needs to be streamlined to, to equip with, with the times.
Right, because it would be three or four months in normal times. If everybody in town has to go through it, it'll, it'll be a logjam and it'll never happen.
Yeah.
All right. Sue?
Sure, thank, thank you, Megan. Dylan actually got there. I just was emphasizing the fact that there is a, you know, the Cape Cod has its own committee that goes to and speaks to the governor and Senator Seer and Rep. Peake as well, just really hoping for questions and views in writing. But Dylan said it perfectly.
Great, so, so we can, you know, address some of those concerns. And we just want to make sure we're allowing folks, you know, obviously, we're hearing, as you are Dylan, from a lot of constituents, particularly small business owners who are, are wondering how their voices can be heard. So it's important for them to hear that there's that, that process and we can make that a little bit more explicit as we go along. So thank you. Did we have anyone else? Okay. Scott, I just had a question for you about when Dylan was noting sort of all these new requirements. How are you foreseeing, are you foreseeing those as areas that you are going to be enforcing in terms of, you know, some of the, you know, regulations? I know there was an, some kind of attestation that each business had to do and they had to have a business plan. Is the Health Department where that is filed?
Well, I have to say that the, most things seem to fall on the Health Department. Thanks, Dylan. Because it seems like the vast majority, I mean, I'm even going to have to do the, some of the Division of Labor Standards stuff because that's a state entity and they're going to call me first. So I'm going to be, yeah, so, yes, absolutely, I mean, most of these things, everything seems to fall that downhill.
So that would be the place that most places would be filing it. Go ahead, Dylan, and then Sue.
Just really quickly, yeah, I mean, I think a lot will, you know, a lot of these orders have been falling to the, the local boards of health, which, you know, Scott's done an incredible job for Falmouth and, you know, just made a Herculean effort on everything that has been put on his plate. But I, you know, I, there was, it was noted today that, you know, the state also wants to play a role in enforcement and is going to be looking to supply resources there as well. And then also, you know, at least for some of these pieces, the Department of Professional Licenseure will play a, a regulatory and enforcement role as well.
Great, thank you. Sue?
I printed out the forms, just took, taking a quick look as they were available for a short amount of time. And also, I think it might have been Rep. Viera, Julian, who sent it, some of the information around. But just, just for the, the business people who might be curious about this, that I think, and Dylan, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think they're, it's like designed to be user-friendly and designed to be something that businesses are probably already doing because it's been publicized. There literally are like checkboxes. And I, Mike Kisparian might breathe in, from my point of view, I think it's going to really quickly boost consumer confidence because there is this, you know, thought that, that folks may be reticent about, you know, social distancing before they really take advantage of businesses that are open. And I, I think that, you know, it, the fact that these businesses have, you know, have this tool, I, I think it should be viewed as a positive. Notwithstanding, we, we have Scott overseeing all of this stuff, but it seems like that, that would be a, a, you know, facilitator.
Great, thank you. Scott, you had your hand up?
Sue, I can promise you that that'll be self-regulated by the public and any, 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 anybody who's departing, you know, not, not following the rules, they'll definitely call me. There's no doubt.
Based on experience?
Well policed out there, yes.
Yeah.
Which is fine.
Very true. Which is, I think, you know, the governor made a great point when he was, you know, the introduction to all of the specifics. You know, he really talked about all of those foundational pieces remain what's most important. You know, the washing of hands, the monitoring of your own symptoms and staying home if you don't feel well. You know, wearing masks, social distancing, all of the things that are actually the easiest things to do that require no forms and require really, you know, no training, no professional expertise are really all of the things that remain kind of the first-line defense against, you know, the spread of this. And so, you know, I think he just kept reminding folks to do sort of that right thing. No one's going to be policing your hand washing. And even to the extent that we're able to police people wearing masks, it, you know, that's fairly limited. But, you know, for people doing the right thing, you know, that really is just kind of the, it, it earns to the benefit of everyone. So.
So, you know, I think he emphasized that personal accountability quite a bit in his discussion today. Any other questions about this particular update on the orders from the governor? Any questions for Dylan or Scott? Doug?
While we have Dylan, I just thought I'd ask, do you have any more insight about state plans for expanded testing? I know I already asked Scott that, but just in case you're just caught off the hill with some information for us.
Yeah, I mean, just, you know, we have a weekly call with, with Mary Lou Sudders. And I think she's been saying this publicly too, is that, it's kind of what I, what I said earlier around 45,000. We want to get up to 45,000 tests a day in Massachusetts by, by mid-July and then 75,000 by the end of the year. And, you know, there's no question that we need to dramatically scale up testing. And, you know, if you talk to experts, they say that in America, we need to be doing somewhere between 1 and 3 million tests a day. We're not, we're nowhere near that. But, you know, per capita for a state, Massachusetts is, is kind of leading the way on testing and contact tracing. And we need to get to the point where 5% of the tests that we do are, are positive. Apparently that is a really good indicator of a region, an entity doing a, a good job of, of, of widespread testing. Right now, that's at around 10% is the latest data that I saw. So we're, we're heading in that direction. There's no question that, we all know that the best thing we can do for businesses is to expand testing and contact tracing. But I, I think we got a lot, we got a lot more work to do.
Glad to hear that you guys are on it. Thank you.
I saw Scott and then Sam.
Yeah, my only thing Dylan would be that make sure you don't just mail us like 2,000 test kits and say, figure it out, right? So hopefully it's done in sort of a coordinated effort, because my fear is, you know, we, it's going to take a little time for a local Board of Health to sort of ramp up testing if it doesn't. Like, we're lucky here because we have Austin County, so Sean was able to take it. But just talking as a general, like, you know, let's say we're Carver or Plimpton, it's going to be really hard to just all of a sudden show up with some more test kits and have towns out. So I don't know.
Well, and I, I don't know how in the weeds we want to get, but, you know, there's been a lot of talk around, you know, what roles did pharmacies play in this, right? There's, you know, there are so many pharmacies in the state and in this country, a whole lot more than, than, than healthcare providers. So, you know, right now pharmacists are allowed to administer a, a whole host of different tests. But COVID is, is not one of them. So there's been some talk about adding that to the, the list of tests. There's also a loophole around, you can get a test, you would be able to currently, it's my understanding, there's a loophole in law currently where you could get a test at a pharmacy, but you had to have to self-administer the test. But then the pharmacy could send you the results. So, you know, these are just kind of a, a piece of what is, of what is being looked at. And I think there's some, there's, there's some, there's a lot more we can do around pharmacies to expand testing as well.
Yeah.
Sam?
Yes, you know, the contact tracing kind of assumes that you have a static population and you have a little outcrop here. But we're in a situation where we're going to have an awful lot of visitors coming onto the Cape. It's fine to say quarantine yourself for 14 days, but you know, people coming across that bridge have no intention of staying in for 14 days. So I, I think we have an additional challenge. But anyway, I, I suggested earlier some kind of an informational sign. I, I think we almost should say COVID-19 is here too. And then give advice on using masks and social distancing. Because we may have lower rates, but we still have it in this community. And somehow or other, it needs to kick into people's mind. This isn't just the, the COVID-19 free area that they can come and just let go because restrictions are, have, have been loosened up. There's going to be some kind of caution in those people that come here. Because we'll never be able to get, keep track of all of the outbreaks. If they're constantly new outbreaks that are coming in waves to this community. And I've certainly heard that message from a lot of our citizens who have been concerned about that as well.
Scott, I saw your hand up when, when you were hearing that from Sam.
Yeah, one of the difficult things with contact tracing is it's the town at which you reside. So if you're a visitor from a town that's not Cape, you're going to be, the whole thing's going to be, the investigation's going to be done by the municipality at which you reside. So let's, you know, east, so that, that would happen there. They could share the event, but it does get tricky when someone's from another state because they don't have the same tracking system that we have. So it is, there is a lot of difficulty, there is a difficulty with, and there's a lot of phone calls and emails back. But it's not, it's, it's not real smooth because it's, Maven is not what we use to track. It's not what they use, let's say, in New Jersey. So it is tricky.
I actually had somebody ask me that question. I didn't really know the answer and I referred him to your office. I don't know if he called, but, oh, if they.
So they're one of the 100 phone calls he got today.
Right. No, it wasn't, it was a few days ago. But so if somebody comes here and starts feeling ill, they come from New York or whatever, and they get tested, they go, they go and go to the hospital, whatever, they find out that they actually are positive COVID. Then are they reported as a Balmouth case or a case from home?
It's from home.
Okay, interesting. So it doesn't affect our numbers, even though they're here impacting our neighborhood?
And vice versa. We, we can travel too. Like, you know, we have a lot of, a lot of Florida calls might be, you know, this, this past winter could have been people that picked it up here and brought it down there. So they're saying it works in reverse. Not everybody just comes here, we go elsewhere.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, I think, I think what, you know, that the discussion is really pointing to is why we are, you know, opening in this phased, really, you know, deliberative manner because of all of these issues that, you know, folks are raising about the challenges with, you know, contact tracing, with the fact that we don't have the, you know, testing widely available. So, you know, we are just doing that balancing act that we've talked about so much as we've gone forward. And, and really hoping for some of that increase in being able to do the testing. So we'll see if, we'll see how things go. Any other questions for Scott or for Dylan?
I would just say quickly on that, on that last point, you know, as was mentioned earlier, I know this is going to change and that's kind of what you're thinking about, but, you know, short-term rentals, still not, still not allowed. We still have a travel advisory in place that urges people not to travel for business or recreation. And we still have a 14-day quarantine advisory for out-of-state travelers. So, you know, I, you know, we, we want people to be adhering to those as, as much as, as they possibly can. And I will say on the contact tracing point, and Scott's probably mentioned this before, that, you know, two things. One, for folks kind of listening at home to this, if a contact, if someone calls you from, like Massachusetts COVID team, make sure you pick up the call and make, if you don't have it, if you don't pick it up, make sure you return the call. That's been a real challenge, is people actually just picking up the call. And there's been effort from the state to get information out there for people to pick up the phone when contact tracers are calling. But one of the good pieces of news from the program is that the median number of contacts that contact tracers have found that people who contract the virus have kind of come in contact with is two. So that's incredibly low, right? And just a sure sign that our social distancing efforts are, are really working. If, if the median number of people who are getting sick is coming on into contact with is just, is just two people.
Yep.
And you want that, you want that number under one, preferably 1.2 best. So two's not, is much better than what we had seen in the past, but that's the number you want to get. That's the magic number. So, yeah, contact tracing is really tough. It's only as good as the information that we're provided for by the, by the person.
Right. And, and then who you can get in touch with to pass that information on. So, great, thank you, Dylan. Really appreciate it. I know it's a lot of information and everybody's still really, you know, going through it to get the details. But very helpful to hear about all the things that folks are working on. I think that's the piece that we hear the most is, you know, is anybody thinking about this? Or is anybody working on this? And to hear all of sort of the breadth of challenges that you and your colleagues are working on, trying to unravel and come up with solutions for, it's, it's really helpful for the public and for us as a board to hear that. So really appreciate it.
Thanks, Megan. Thank you guys for all your incredible work. Make sure you all vote tomorrow, all those folks at home listening. All right.
Hey, thanks, Dylan.
Thank you, Dylan, very much. Appreciate it. Scott, um, do you want to, do you feel that you want to stay for the last piece about updated seating? Or, or not? I'm gonna, if you'd like to go, you should absolutely go because.
I mean, I've been, the only question I had is what with, when we think about seating is, if a place has, let's say, 40% occupancy on a 100-seat restaurant and they're only allowed 40 seats, does the, does the excess outdoor seating allow them to go beyond that 40%? That was the only question I had.
Great. So why don't we actually, if we can bring in Irene?
Irene and Frank as well.
And Frank, yep, please. And I'm just going to step away to get some more water. So Doug, if you would just, Doug Brown, if you could just direct the conversation so we can hear from Town Council about their sort of thought about updated modified restaurant seating? And then answering that question, which is a question everyone has that Scott has just raised.
Right, absolutely.
I'll turn it over to Doug. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So Irene, is, do you have a legal opinion about whether or not we can go beyond the 40% with outdoor seating?
Um, that's really going to depend on exactly what the governor's order that permits restaurants to start occupying, sorry, operating with any seating capacity actually says. So until we have that information, it's not going to be clear whether the restriction is going to be to a certain percentage of occupancy period, or whether it's going to say restricted to a certain percentage of occupancy inside.
Right. Sue?
So Scott or Irene or Julian, have we asked that that question be forwarded so that it will be included in the information the governor produces?
Um, I can answer that. Every call I've been on with a county, yes, I have, I've asked that question. We have a, yes, I've asked as many times as I can with that, with that.
Okay. And who's next to share? What are we doing so far?
Yeah, I was just actually going to prompt Irene to talk a little bit more about the, what we can and cannot do with expedited permitting specifically.
Okay, so there are a lot of permit issues that are implicated by moving restaurant seating outdoors. The exact shape and size of those permitting issues depends on the precise facts of each property. So it's not something that we can say as a one-size-fits-all. So I'll just start with, Dylan had mentioned that there is some pending legislation as to alcohol beverage control licensing, which if there was some change in that, might help speed things up. But as it stands right now, each premises that serves alcohol, their license is tied to a designation of premises. And if that changes, if it goes from the interior of the structure to, for example, also include the structure, the property's lawn, that would have to be modified through a change in the license that would go in front of the Board of Selectmen. So in that case, they would apply for a change in their premises designation. They would go in front of the Board of Selectmen. If that was approved, then it gets sent to the ABCC. They have said that they can process those applications in an expedited fashion, which is about a five to seven day turnaround at this time. So any establishment that wanted to serve, for example, if they have a beer and wine license with, for their dinners, if they want to serve wine in the outdoor part of their seating, if they have outdoor seating, then that's going to have to change the premises designation for their liquor license. So that's one. There also is common victualers licenses for establishments that are preparing and serving food. Those also have a floor plan that is part of the license. And if that is being changed, that again, needs to go to the Board of Selectmen to file an amendment to their license. And that needs to be approved. So those would be sort of probably applicable to any restaurant. Obviously, if they don't have a liquor license, they don't have to deal with that. But common victualers will likely be any and all attempts to have outdoor seating, unless their floor plan already includes an outdoor area. There is, for example, one restaurant on Main Street that does have the outdoor patio on private property that is already within their victualers license. That doesn't need to change. But anyone that was trying to add that as new, that would be an additional change. So those are the sort of threshold issues about food and beverage. Beyond that, it can get into depending on the details of the property, a alteration to any existing special permit from the planning board and/or an existing permit or special permit from the zoning board. And that's going to be very fact-specific. There may be properties that, for example, don't have any sort of zoning or planning permit in place, particularly if they're longstanding properties that may pre-exist a lot of our zoning codes. But if they were to expand their seating, if they're pre-existing non-conforming, that could be an issue because it's an expansion of a pre-existing non-conforming use. Similarly, if someone has a special permit from the planning board that defines what their property, how the restaurant is situated on the property and the, the features of that, if that gets altered, that would have to be altered through the zoning bylaw. So that process, basically, if there, if there were to need to be a special permit issued, for example, if a particular restaurant was applying to install a tent, a temporary tent, to use for outdoor seating on a portion of its property, that could possibly need a special permit under the zoning bylaw. And that would have to go through a hearing process. Under existing state law, the hearing process is protracted. There is notice to a butters that requires a certain period of notice and then the hearing is scheduled. The board has to hear the matter and then issue a decision on it. So, and I would anticipate that there may be several of these type of petitions. So there will be a logistical issue there. Additionally, if there are wanting to, for example, some businesses have thought that perhaps they could use parking. So spaces that are parking spaces to put up seating or a tent. And if there were to be a change in parking, that could implicate the required parking for the number of seats in the restaurant. And that's going to, again, depend on exactly how much capacity we're talking here, whether it's 40% split between indoor and outdoor, or you get a certain percentage indoor and you can have whatever you want outdoor. There's going to be a certain required number of spaces per seat. And if you are taking away parking, the question is going to be whether you still have a sufficient number of seats. So that.
Oh, no, if I can just say, so in general, I mean, this is coming, and I think you were, you were online, sort of in the, the waiting room when this was happening, but, and I know this is part of the conversation that we had. I don't know, when did we have this conversation? Last week, that we talked to the department and with you and Frank, with Julian and Peter and with, you know, Noreen and Tom and Mike Kasperian was also there and the chief, just about this exact issue. And one of the things that we're hoping for, and Dylan just noted, that we're really hoping for that relaxation of those regulatory requirements so that there might be some flexibility and discretion really granted more at municipal level to allow for the potential for some of these things. And we know we don't have that right now. But it sounds like it's something that may be coming either from the executive or from the legislative branch, which would really address what you're noting, which are the, the practical hurdles as they stand right now are significant. And that's exactly why we're looking for that, that relaxation or change in some of that statutory law so that we can have a little bit more flexibility depending on how we, we utilize it. But as things stand now, and just correct me if I'm wrong, what you're saying is that, that the level of flexibility is quite limited until we have some relief from the state.
That's right. Right now, we have sort of a patchwork of different permitting issues, some of which are faster. That's right. Right now we have sort of a patchwork of different permitting issues, some of which are faster, some of which are quite protracted, particularly once you get into zoning. Um, and in that situation, we couldn't provide a streamlined, um, process where you one-stop shopping. Where you could have one approval for all of those things at once. Uh, we don't have that. We also don't have, um, any sort of ability to. Push the process through fast enough from this point now to be able to immediately meet that need upon. You know, with the governor's approval to, uh, have restaurant capacity for, uh, inside dining.
But the good, the good thing is though, everything you've described, I mean, this is just me speaking, but I think the good thing is everything you've described, because what you're noting. Are all state regulatory requirements. Every single municipality is facing the exact same challenge, which is a great incentive. For there to be, um, some, some relief hopefully, um, from the state house. Because we are all, every town is situated in the same way when it comes to this issue. Um. And then just to highlight the other piece that you said, which I think is really helpful for businesses to hear. Um, every business is different because it depends on what their permits look like. It depends on. Um, the very specific nature of the layout of their property, the layout of their business. So there isn't one trajectory we can direct folks down. Um, it really is fact specific and businesses who are interested in looking at some of those options really, you know, should kind of start. To assess, um, you know, some of the, the particularities about their business. And I think that that's. An important takeaway that I know we, um, you and Frank passed on, um, to Mike Casparian. And I know he passed that on to the members of the Chamber of Commerce to note that, you know, if a business is interested. In looking at potential options to really start to, um, dig into, you know, what their, what their permit looks like and. Um, you know, which particular departments, whether it's zoning or, or, uh, planning it implicate. So I think that's. You know, it's helpful for people to understand that there isn't a quick fix, um, from the town perspective. But it really does sound like I'm, I'm very, um, I was very heartened to hear from Dylan that it seemed like. You know, the legislature is looking at it as well as hopefully the governor to make this process smoother for us. Um, so thank you.
From our, our colleagues across the state, um, that towns are facing, towns and cities are facing the same problems and it does seem. Um, you know, from the, from the armchair, uh, that it would be a great thing to be addressed through an executive order. Um, as Dylan said, it, it sort of lends itself. It's a temporary situation. These are temporary solutions versus. Sort of long-term legislative change, um, to provide a single unified expedited process. Um, so that would be lovely.
Great. Thank, thank you. Fingers crossed, right? Um, I saw Doug Brown and then anybody else who wants to weigh in. And then we can kind of talk specifically about, um, maybe Julian or Peter, if you wanna start the conversation specifically about what some of the. Things are that we're, we've been talking about, um, and, uh, we can weigh in on some of those issues. So go ahead, Doug.
So it seems to me that we need to put it down on paper, what it is that our objective would be, who would be the, uh. The person that would sign off if we do get some relief. So we would want to designate maybe. The planning, the town planner, the zoning administrator, the building commissioner. And I don't know if there would be others, but maybe those three people could independently review these seating plans if.
I think it'll probably depend, Doug. I mean, I, I think your, your point is well taken, but it probably is gonna depend on what the relief looks like. You, you know, what that, however that's crafted, um, it, it could, I mean, it could give. A board, that could give the Board of Selectmen. I mean, just, you know, I mean, it depends on what it says. It could specifically say zoning or it's, you know. Um, I mean, I just think it depends on what, what the relief looks like when it comes down, because it will still. Yep, sorry.
I was just thinking in terms of what might be best for us and we could throw that suggestion out there. Maybe they haven't even thought of it yet, how it would work. I don't know what they're gonna come up with, but we could suggest it. Yes, Peter?
Um, uh, yeah, I was just going to ask, I, you know, I know there has been conversation at the state level about. Uh, the liquor licenses, as was mentioned by Dylan and Irene. Um, my impression as of last week anyway was that. There did not seem to be any discussion about legislation that would, uh, let, enable businesses. To, uh, eliminate local zoning requirements. Those, you know, zoning is very much a local, those are. Up to town by town and the state normally doesn't have authority to set those laws. So I didn't know if any. Um, again, to put Irene on the spot, because I know she's been, um, monitoring the conversations with the other. Uh, attorneys from other cities and towns, whether that is now actually being contemplated.
We haven't heard that there is any proposed legislation as to zoning, um, and we haven't had any information at all from inside the reopening. Task force.
Great. Well, hopefully we, we will, particularly as the, we have the subcommittee. Um, Frank, go ahead and then Julian. Did you, I didn't know if you had your hand up, Julian, but Frank, I saw you.
Irene and I participated in a conference. Wednesday, I think it was, and one of the participants was, uh, the Executive Director of the Alcoholics Beverage Control Commission. Who did say that they were looking at a way of trying to, from their perspective, trying to give some relief to municipalities and we might expect to hear. From them this week, but we haven't heard yet. So it's something that's being considered and it would be in the, in the, uh, context of trying to expedite. Amendments to liquor licenses.
Right, thank you. Julian, did I miss your hand or?
Yes, thank you, um, Madam Chair. I also wanted to note that as part of that expanded discussion last week, uh, that included, um. Chief Dunn and, uh, uh, Michael, uh, Casparian, our President of our Chamber and, uh, many other, you know, many staff, uh. Persons as well, his legal counsel. Um, one of the things that, uh, came up and I believe has. With some consistency come up in emails of the Board of Selectmen or suggestions that, uh, Main Street should merely be turned into a pedestrian mall and. And that in doing so, that could potentially grant some significant relief, uh, presumably to restaurants. Um, and, uh, and facilitate their, um. Their speedy, uh, return, uh, to, uh, you know, a better place. And, um, I just wanted to note that. What we had heard in, in that meeting from the chamber is that a significant number of downtown businesses are opposed. To a closure of Main Street. And, uh, I, I had not heard that previously. Um, it was, it's not the majority, but, uh, we were told it was a significant number. Um, and there were some other options that were tossed out as possibilities. Uh, one suggestion, and I welcome the, uh, chief's comments on that because I think some individuals may be watching that. Um, continue to, uh, advocate that in general. Um, there was a suggestion in lieu of a. Uh, significant closure of Main Street to do a, uh, some type of time of day closure. Or varying days of the week closure of Main Street within certain designated areas and. Uh, as, uh, I'll let Chief Dunn comment on that. Uh, Chief, if you'd be so willing, because I thought, um, that. The chief raised some very important points in terms of ramifications of that on again, on again, off again, potential, uh, situation.
Uh, yeah, when we had that conversation, uh, the closure of Main Street, as you know, we, we, we shut it down for the Christmas stroll and things like that. Uh, just want, I made it aware, uh, that it usually takes us about an hour, hour and a half to actually shut it down. Especially when you have vehicles parked all over Main Street. And that's with the assistance of the businesses telling their customers, you know, please move your car, this place is to park, come back afterwards. But it usually takes us about an hour, hour and a half. We, and we still end up towing anywhere from, uh, four to eight cars. Um, depending on the, the, the length of the closure. The other piece is just so that you're aware, uh, I mean, it's doable. It's just gonna take time. Uh, the other piece is usually when we close the full length of Main Street, it's gonna take seven officers and a supervisor to do that. And then we have to make a determination, what are we gonna use for barriers? I mean, where it's just a temporary closure, um, we'd probably wanna use some BPW trucks. I just wanted to bring all that, that piece up here.
Great, thank you. Um, Sue?
Just while we're on that subject, because, you know, we certainly wanna, um, you know, have success for all of the businesses. On, on Main Street. I know we're talking about right now, but I'm wondering if there's, uh, been any review by the town engineer. If, for example, um, a compromise one way, um, part of the street. It was taken and so that we could expand the sidewalk use that some of, uh, the restaurants are looking at. So I'm, I'm just curious if that has even come up.
I, I can tell it came up in the meeting as a, um, as a possible suggestion, um, as one of the things that, um, I think, you know. Um, maybe Doug actually, Doug Brown, I think brought it up as, you know, many of our restaurants are kind of situated, um, not. All of them on Main Street, but you know, a lot on sort of one side of the, the south side really, um, of Main Street. And so there was some discussion, um, about that. You know, I can just say from the, um, from the. The position that we have, from the communication from the chamber and then also from members, um, business owners on Main Street. I would say, uh, uh, you know, that the divide tends to be, um, restaurants and retail shops. Because obviously they, they really are, are facing different challenges. Um, retail shops can't even open at all. I mean, they've really had absolutely no business. For quite some time now, whereas restaurants have at least had the kind of takeout option, um, as challenging as that is. So. I know there was, and as a board, we've received some correspondence, um, from individuals who are retail owners. Who are very concerned about any type of closure because they, they, you know, their, their communications that they really depend on street. Uh, you know, the, the people driving by who maybe weren't going to necessarily spend time on Main Street. But that kind of window shopping, seeing it and stopping, um, so, you know, I think that there, one of the other things we talked about is. Potential options to explore. Again, most of this is really reliant on some relief, um. At the state level from some of the regulatory requirements, but we talked about utilizing some of our green space that we have in the Main Street area. For potential outdoor seating, um, you know, for, uh, on a, in a temporary way. Um, and so I think there were a lot of ideas that were thrown around. I can, um, as far as whether or not anyone looked at the closure, I don't think. Um, Julian, can you correct me if I'm wrong? I don't think there was specific review of, um, that suggestion about the one-way. The implications of turning Main Street into a, um, one-way. Or one lane, one-way, I guess is what it would be.
Correct. That, that was not specifically reviewed. We would, uh, certainly be able to do that. Um, wanna. Do that in close, uh, coordination with, uh, both Chief Dunn and Chief Small, uh, but my recollection is having read. Uh, at least a few of the, um, concerns raised by the retail owners, which, um, you're referring, um, Madam Chair.
Yes.
There, there was a significant stress on maintaining parking spaces in front of each of the respective businesses. And, uh, maintaining, uh, the suggestion was maintaining a two-way flow was fairly significant, but, uh. You know, again, we'd have to drill down and see, uh, changing, uh, that portion of Main Street into part of a one-way pair. Presumably, I guess with Catherine Lee Bates, uh, uh, would, uh, present some, uh, I think, public safety related. Challenges that we would want to be, uh, cautious of and we'll be happy to explore that further.
I saw Doug.
I just want, since Michael is not here today, Michael Casparian had a great idea, what, what I thought was a great idea of, in the short term. Possibly putting, uh, picnic tables on the library lawn. It would create a, a kind of a sense of an atmosphere of welcoming. People can go to the restaurants, buy the food, take it outside on the picnic table. You get a kind of a sense of community. You're, you're sort of dining out and, uh, that would be, I think, a limited liability on the town's part. Because public space anyway, they're not gonna be able to drink alcohol on the library lawn, but they can get their dinner and. Go out and enjoy some socializing. So I thought that was a great start and it could be done probably pretty simply. So I, I hope we can start with ideas like that.
Yeah, and, and I think too, um, you know, we are not even at the place yet where we're allowed. Where businesses, um, you know, where rest, uh, retail on the whole is allowed to open. They can do some curbside, which some of them have been trying to do. Um, and same for restaurants at this point. Um, so, you know, we do have some time to continue with some of these, I, these possible suggestions. Um, what, yes, Peter?
I just wanted to add on that topic. The library board will be meeting tomorrow to discuss, um, placing additional picnic tables. Out on the, uh, on the green closer to Main Street. They already, uh, a couple of weeks ago purchased. Um, or authorized the purchase of two additional picnic tables. So that's, uh, that is something that is being looked at. And it's, it is probably one of the, um, more practical things that we can address without a whole lot of hurdles. It would, uh, just to clarify what it would be, it would just be a public picnic table that anyone could take, could use and including takeout from local restaurants. Um, the one challenge that we do have that we'll need to be talking to the chamber about, and it was mentioned on our call last week. Is those tables really ought to be cleaned between each use and, uh, hopefully the, the chamber or the restaurants. That are right there on Main Street can partner to, um, provide some staffing so that that can take place.
And we can put up signs and a little bleach spray bottle and say, you know, maybe the public can contribute to that as well.
So anything else that we haven't touched upon? I mean, clearly the biggest challenge is really one that we. Uh, we have a lot of great options available. The biggest challenge is one that we don't control, which is some of that relief from that, the, the time. Um, intensive, uh, piece of some of the regulatory issues. Um, but I think the takeaway, and I know this is the message that Michael Casparian passed on to. Uh, the membership is, if this is something that your business is interested in, this is a time to start to investigate, as I noted before. The particular position of your business and, um, what it might implicate in terms of, uh, which, you know, permitting, uh, path it would take. So we, we hope people are able to do that while we wait for, um, additional relief from, uh, from the state. Have I missed anyone? Jen, did you wanna weigh in?
From space?
Yeah, from outer space.
Oh, you're still muted.
I'm still, yeah, it's getting late. I'm never good after nine o'clock. I'm just here, I was in the last two agenda items, um, just monitoring. You know, if anybody had any questions about fin, you know, financing or money or anything like that, that, you know, jump in, um, there's been. You know, some talk about that. So I'm just here to, to, to monitor the financing part of it and answer any questions.
Great, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Yes, Julian?
I'm sorry, go ahead, Doug. I didn't mean to interrupt. I, I just wanted to, um, uh, ma- maybe summarize, Madam Chair, if I may, the, uh, listening to the governor's, uh, press conference today and. Reviewing his, uh, four-phase plan, I just wanted to underscore that restaurants, uh, unfortunately. Their time does not arise until phase two in the plan that was unveiled today and the governor at, uh, uh, unless. He changes his approach, made it clear that, um, phase two would not, uh, become effective. Until a minimum of three weeks from today, meaning, uh, Monday, June eighth by my calendar. Um, now it's possible that some rollout may occur sooner, but he was fairly, uh, strong in emphasizing that, in my view. And indicated that that might even be postponed further if the data suggested that it might be premature. To allow that, uh, restaurants to open up. So that was a matter of some concern that I think surprised many of us. That thought the restaurant rollout beyond the, uh, minimum carryout option would come, um, potentially considerably sooner. So I did wanna mention that that was part of the press conference today and part of the, uh. Uh, I would say twenty or thirty-page, uh, document, a report from the governor's committee. That clearly placed restaurants in phase two. By the way, they also placed, uh, recreation and camps in phase two as well.
Yes, and, and I thank you for raising that because, uh, we're getting to that time period. Um, and, and I know, um, you and I had an email with Joe. Alenick, um, from the Recreation Department, week before last, um, and really clearly a lot of. Parents are concerned about what options there will be available for camps. And I'll speak just specifically to the, to the rec camp. Because that's the camp that the town, uh, you know, runs and, um, because it's, you know, I know that there is. I listened to Lieutenant Governor today and she talked about the fact that there is a separate subcommittee that's really looking at what protocols would be in place. To allow some camps to open. And so they noted that it is one of the priority areas that they are looking at because they understand the important role. areas that they are looking at, because they understand the important role that camp plays for childcare for many people when school is not in session. So hopefully, we'll get some guidance on that. The rec camp obviously wouldn't normally start until the end of the school year anyway. So we're really a little bit more than a month away from when the camp would usually open. It's that that first week generally of July. So there is some time still to get some guidance and see if it's possible for that camp to operate in a modified manner, if at all. So that is something that we are, you know, looking at and waiting for guidance on. And, you know, clearly, it sounded to me that the takeaway was that there were, as the phase, as a phase one is rolling out, that it seemed like, you know, kind of all the special interest groups were being a little bit better about advocating. And so maybe we'll see some tweaks around some of these issues. The fact that there's kind of a subgroup working on camps and a subgroup working on lodging, you know, tells me that maybe that advocacy work is picking up some steam. So hopefully, we'll have that detailed, a little bit more detailed information as the weeks play out. Anything else that we've missed? Doug Brown?
So just to throw out there to the the general public and to the restaurants, if people, people should be planning for the worst and hoping for the best. So maybe they should start to draw up some little sketches of where they might be able to put some tables. I mean, each place has its own particular characteristics, but if they want to put a planter in front of the dumpster and put a couple of chairs or tables out back, they should put that on paper and start to think in terms of submitting that as a proposal to the respective board, whether it's they have a ZBA permit or Planning Board Site Plan Review, because we don't know really how long this is going to go, even though we don't expect the zoning process to be fast enough to give us relief. At the same time, this could come back in the winter. So they should probably prepare for the worst now, in just in case. So I would advise them to all keep going with their plans, whatever those might be. And then the second thing I wanted to say is, I would love to have our board send a letter to the governor specifically asking for the type relief that we're thinking of. And hopefully, they're already thinking of it, but just in case they're not, because I think we're in a position where we should at least be asking the question of the governor, what are what are your plans? And, you know, this is what we think we need. So I don't know how we could assemble that or who would take the lead on that.
So what I would say is now that we have the phase one information from the governor, I think that we can, as we just heard from Dylan, we can craft sort of a response that we can send to all of the folks that we just talked about, you know, raising some of our concerns. And this board can take a look at it at our next meeting and and get that out. But I think that that's something that we can, and you want to sort of work with Julian on putting something together as a draft for us to look at, I think. Sue?
I didn't mean to interrupt.
No, no, go ahead, please. Please interrupt me.
I won't have many more chances. So I would just make sure we go through the CAPE Committee that's focused on particular CAPE action. So it was, I was just going to make that implementation suggestion and then, of course, work with Dylan and David and Michael Casperian.
Well, my other concern is, is if it's going to be from this board, we're not going to meet next week because it's Memorial Day. That's two weeks away. So maybe this other group can send the letter. Maybe we could collaborate with this CAPE group that's already working on it.
I think that that that's within, I mean, I'll take direction if the board thinks otherwise, but I think it's within our, you know, the purview for us to ask the town manager to put together something that can be sent to this board, just noting all the things that we've just discussed and are concerned about.
I really kind of was hoping we would send off a letter, ask Julian to send off a letter now, just to, I mean, it's the sooner the better to get the letter out and just say, hey, we're asking for relief. I don't think it would be actually a long.
No, that's what I'm saying, Doug, is I'm saying that we we've now discussed where we are with phase one. And we've heard from one of our state reps about who is specifically advocating for our region. And I think we can raise the concerns that we've discussed. We've heard from town council, assistant town council, we can raise those concerns with a letter that we direct Julian to send.
And because.
You know, noting the issue about regulatory relief and the need for that, you know, for regulatory relief to address some of these issues. So I think that we can, you know, that's not something that we have to wait to necessarily vote on unless this board feels otherwise. We frequently ask Julian to send letters on behalf of the board.
Should we make a motion for that? I mean, I would make a motion, I would make a motion that we ask our town manager to send a letter to the governor and other interested authorities to offer us zoning and liquor license relief so that our restaurants can provide alternate seating plan.
Can you modify your motion to include our chair?
What did you say?
Sorry, I didn't.
To have that letter come from our chair and the town manager.
Oh, yes, definitely. I would I would make that amendment.
Okay. I have a motion. Give a second. Okay, Patterson, okay, by any further discussion? Okay, by roll call, Patterson?
Patterson, aye.
Sam? Doug Brown?
Brown, aye.
I got you. Okay. I think we're getting a little delayed. Doug Jones?
Jones, aye.
Moran, aye.
Moran?
Moran, aye.
And English Braga, English Braga, aye. Okay, excellent. Thank you. Anything else on this particular issue? Right. Thank you, Jennifer. Thank you, Scott, Irie, Frank, Chief. We really appreciate the way in and all the various perspectives that you bring to it. Okay, we have meetings of minutes, public session, May 4th and May 11.
I move approval on the May 4th. I found this to be substantially correct and also released for public access.
Okay. Doug Brown, do you second that? Okay.
I'll second that.
Okay. By roll call, Patterson?
Patterson, aye.
Brown?
Brown, aye.
Moran? She said Moran, aye. And then Jones?
Jones, aye.
English Braga, aye. How about May 11?
I move approval and release for public access to the meetings of Monday, May 11.
A second.
Okay, by roll call, Patterson?
Patterson, aye.
Brown?
Brown, aye.
Moran?
Moran, aye.
Jones?
Jones, aye.
English Braga, aye. Okay, individual selectmen reports.
Who's up?
Go ahead, Sam.
Yeah, I want to mention that I received a memorandum from the our our committee preservation coordinator, Carol Sutherland, and the staff had gotten together and had a whole series of things that they need to be worried about and looking forward. And so town meeting has obviously been postponed, and we're not quite sure when that's going to take place. And so they're trying to figure out how to handle all the articles that have been submitted for that town meeting, and then maybe looking at postponing them into November. So that is ongoing. But one of the things that we we need to recognize is they're anticipating a reduction in state revenue. So they had sort of budgeted an 18% matching portion from the state, and they're saying, don't expect anything more than 11. I don't know their sources, but they're at least trying to look at a fall fallback position. I also want to mention that I have reached out really on behalf of the Falmouth Rotary Club to talk to Jill Bishop about how we might be able to support them with manpower versus with money. We'd previously done fundraisers, and since all the fundraising essentially has been canceled. But anyway, I wanted to mention that, you know, really, very much impressed with how much support effort that the senior center staff is giving all of the seniors and and working with Meals on Wheels, elder services, that particular part of it, and making sure that people are getting the right kind of food. They use the van to run around and do shopping runs for people who are not able to get out themselves, also pharmacy runs. So there's a terrific amount of support going on. And I want to also include the school department in that, because about 60 families are receiving breakfast and lunch, nutrition, and over 120 of them get weekend meals for the entire breakfast, lunch, and dinner. And then, of course, we have the private organizations. But I actually would like to ask that we might include on an upcoming agenda, a report from our Department of Human Services to just basically give us an overview of the kind of support services that we're we are providing to our citizens, because it's extensive and it's pretty impressive. And I'm certainly proud of our town and how much we're trying to make sure that people are getting the basic needs that they, you know, that's, that's not addressing issues of rent and mortgage payments for those who are out of work. But there is a tremendous amount. And then, of course, there are all the non-governmental organizations like the Home Service Center and all the church groups in town. So there's a great support effort going on, I think, in the circumstances. And I would like to see.
That's a great idea.
Lee Hopman might be able to give us an overview of just how the town is actually working to make sure that nobody falls through the cracks and really is overly stressed in terms of their basic need.
Yeah, that's a great idea, Sam. It's also a great way to let folks know what resources are out there if they're not accessing them already, because I think people have the misconception about schools and the senior center being closed, when in fact, those services, as you know, continue on in really significant ways. So I think it's a public service to get that information out there. So we will definitely put that on for our upcoming agenda. That's great. Thank you. Doug Brown, did you?
Just looking forward to Wednesday, having a chance to participate in the staff meeting with the beach opening planning. And hopefully, we can come up with a good plan. Sounds like they're already on track with a lot of good ideas.
Yeah, great. Thank you. Sue?
Thank you. You know, I just, I'm not running again for this board. But I have to say, based upon my my county positions, I've always relished the fact that there are so many people on the CAPE who really hold Falmouth up as, you know, sort of the most congenial, effective, productive, caring Board of Selectmen. And I just, I can't thank you enough for being my colleagues. I'm, I'm just so impressed with the fact that, you know, we all have different talents. We all really appreciate the staff, our town management. We all really try to squeeze the most we can out of the tax dollar. We listen to all of our constituents. And it's, you know, it's just been a tremendous experience. And I'm really, you know, there's some great candidates coming up. I think the board is going to even excel to to higher levels in the biggest challenge that this this community and this country has ever faced. And I think that we will always be in sort of that that springboard position where we're just a little bit ahead, because we think ahead, we have committee support like no other. I think that's foundational. And I know I've forgotten to mention a couple of things, but I couldn't couldn't leave without saying that. Thank you.
Thank you, Sue.
It's certainly been fun and a pleasure working with you, Sue.
Oh, we're not through yet.
Nope.
Doug? I'll just say that, you know, Sue was the person who actually called me and said that I should run for this position. So I curse her some days, but what she said was, don't worry, we'll make it easy. And I knew it was like a con, but really, it's true, because this group, you know, and Sue, you've been a huge part of that, is is a group of people who doesn't always agree, but is something that we don't see in a lot of places anymore. Institutions is incredibly civil, and everyone does their homework and shows up with a level of dedication. And I think few people have shown dedication more than you, Sue, through a lot of really tough things. And you have been just incredible leader. And we, we know you're not leaving our community. We know where you live. You live in a very prominent, beautiful place. And so we expect that you'll continue to advocate for our community in whatever way that is. But your mark on this board certainly is one that is significant. And so we expect that we'll be collaborating, we hope we'll be collaborating on many things in the in the near future. So thank you for all of your work for Falmouth on this board. And with that, I'll ask if Julian, do you have any town managers report?
Well, thank you, Madam Chair. Just a couple of brief items. I wanted to also weigh in on the thanks, thanks to Town Clerk Michael Palmer, who, in speaking with him today, that obviously confirmed that everything is moving forward in anticipation of tomorrow's election, elections, both municipal and state. I do want to compliment Michael and his extraordinary staff, their exceptional diligent work in preparing for tomorrow's election under the most difficult of circumstances. And I know Michael personally has worked many, many long hours, evenings, weekends, in preparation. And a tip of the hat to him for his extraordinary leadership, really on behalf of other town clerks as well, for the kind of job that needs to be done for early voting and other creative approaches during this pandemic. And we're very pleased to work in support of Michael and Suzanne, Lori, and others who, from time to time, join his staff. We're happy to assist them in making all that happen. It's a great privilege as well. I also wanted to note that the board's next regular meeting is Monday, June 1st, as has been noted. And I want to take this opportunity to personally thank selectwoman Sue Moran. Sue, it's been my pleasure and honor and privilege to work with you as a selectman, and also very successfully in your leadership as chair of this Board of Selectmen as well. So thank you for the opportunity to serve you as a selectman and to work on your behalf. And I wish you the best of all things that come in the future, and look forward to our paths continuing to cross. And thank you again.
Thank you all. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
I move return, Jones?
I'll second. Brown?
Everyone wants to second that one. All right, I'll by roll call, Patterson?
Patterson, aye.
Brown?
Brown, aye.
Moran?
Moran, aye.
Jones, you already did it. English Braga, aye. Thank you all. And everybody, make sure you vote. And we're looking forward to continuing all of this important work with maybe one new addition. So thank you all.
Definitely one new addition.
Yes, only one. Thank you.